Good evening and welcome to the Temecula City Council Meeting and I'd like to call this Council Meeting to Order. And our prelude music this evening was Lea Arben. Thank you, Lea, very much. Beautiful. This evening we have our invocation by Lead Pastor Demetri Felton Senior of Beyond the Walls Church and be followed by the flag salute by Mayor Pro Tem Matt Ron. So Pastor Felton, are you here? Come on down. Would you all stand, please?
How you doing, ma'am?
Good evening.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, great is your name in all the earth. Thank you for your grace and your mercy that you give each one of us every day. We thank you for the opportunities we have to serve one another, for there's no greater act we can do than to serve our fellow man. Thank you for the mayor and all the men and women who served on the city council and for their tireless dedication to make our city a safe and desirable place to live. Continue to give them wisdom and guidance to govern in a way that honors you and blesses our citizens. I pray that you would bless the meeting tonight. May there be spirit of unity and cooperation as decisions are made. May everything done and said tonight be for the good of all and bring honor and glory to your name. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Okay, please join me in saluting our flag. Place your hand over your heart. There you go. And repeat after me. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comacherow.
Here.
Councilmember Niggar.
I am here.
Councilmember Ron.
Hello, I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Edwards.
And I am here. We have several presentations tonight and the first one is especially wonderful because it's a great friend of the city and a great friend of mine. We have a presentation for Alice Sullivan, who has been chosen as Riverside County's Third District Woman of the Year. So Alice, could you please come down? We have a certificate of recognition for you. And I see you brought John with you this evening. Good evening, sir. This is very special for us.
Thank you.
So the city council is proud to present the certificate of recognition to Alice Sullivan, President and CEO of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce for being named Riverside County Third District Woman of the Year. Alice began her career with the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce in 1989, has functioned in every capacity, and was named President and CEO in 1994. She was instrumental in launching several organizations, has served on several boards and committees, and has attended numerous business and nonprofit events that impact Temecula and its surrounding areas. That is an understatement. It has to number in the thousands of events at this point. Alice's dedication to and involvement in many organizations in our community has led her to be selected for this distinguished recognition. We congratulate Alice on receiving this prestigious award and thank her for her commitment to enhancing the quality of life in our community. And on behalf of everyone here, not just the council members but city staff that work so closely with you on so many things, our Chamber of Commerce is second to none and it is largely because of this lady and the influence that she has had and the fabulous staff that you have hired and helped to train. So I'm going to walk this down to you and we have flowers for you too. And if you'd like to say anything, go ahead and you can start and I will work my way down there.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor Edwards. I do have a few words. I'd like to thank the entire city council, the city staff, mayor, Pro Tem Ron, and city manager Aaron Adams for my nomination and being selected. I am truly honored. I love my job. I think one of the things that I love most is making things happen and connecting people. I have been attending these city council members for 28 years now and the leadership that we've had over the years is just unsurpassed and I thank you, Mike Niggar and Jeff Comacherow and Jeff Stone and everyone. You absolutely have been wonderful. I'd like to also thank Randy, Greg Butler, Luke, and all of the city staff for their tremendous amount of, you know, just basically helping the business community. When I call City Hall, things happen really, really quickly. Christine and I go out and we visit many, many of the businesses and we thank them for being here in Temecula. I'd also like to thank my Chairman of the Board, Brian Connors, is here tonight with me, and Laura Turnbow, she is my rock. She has been with me for 28 years now and sometimes things get a little crazy, but she has been there for me and I appreciate her and love her. And my best friend Kelly Daniels and also Kim Keller here is here tonight and Paul Nolta. And lastly, I would like to thank my wonderful, wonderful, amazing, incredible husband who I love and thank you for your support. Thank you very much for this recognition.
This is a wonderful proclamation and it is for National Public Works Week. So would you like to go down and stand in the chosen spot? Please, Pat Thomas. National Public Works Week. So if we didn't have public works, we wouldn't have roads, we wouldn't have bridges, we wouldn't have buildings, we wouldn't have very many of the things that we need and use every single day. So Pat Thomas, this is for you. City of Temecula proclamation, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and whereas the support and understanding of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, land development, storm water management, public buildings and grounds, parks and infrastructure maintenance, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these services and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services as well as their planning, design, construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works personnel and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, I therefore, on behalf of the city council, the city of Temecula proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th to be National Public Works Week. Public works connects us. So it certainly does connect us. So what would you like to tell us about public works that I haven't already read in here?
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm happy to accept this proclamation on behalf of the 57 hardworking employees in the Public Works Department at the city of Temecula. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for your commitment to the city's infrastructure. I know you're faced with a lot of other competing priorities and infrastructure I know is one of your top priorities. And also thank the mayor and council for your confidence in the Public Works Department for our ability to maintain this important asset of the city. So thank you very much and I will be happy to share this proclamation with all of our employees during our week of May 21st through the 27th.
That's great. Be good to them that week and tell them how much we appreciate their hard work.
I will.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to pass that down. Now we have another city proclamation because it is Bike Month. I didn't know there was a month for bikes, but apparently there is. So Zach Schwank, Community Services Commissioner, you're going to assume the position of honor. And Matt Peters. Matt Peters, come on. You've worked hard on this. Bike Month. And Zach is a cyclist. Matt, are you a cyclist too?
I am.
You are.
Not like Zach.
Yeah, not like Zach. And Councilmember Niggar is a cyclist? Still, right? Right? So whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Temecula's scenic beauty, and whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Temecula and its visitors will experience the joys of cycling through online educational programs, organized rides, bike trains, commuting events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride, whereas Temecula's bike lane and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits, and whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Temecula, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, and reducing pollution and congestion, and whereas Hike Bike Temecula, The Bike Shop, Temecula Bicycle Coalition, Inland Empire Biking Alliance, Inland Valley Mountain Bike Association, League of American Bicyclists, and other local organizations and businesses will be promoting bicycling during the month of May, and whereas these groups are also promoting bicycle tourism year-round to attract more visitors, to enjoy our local restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, cultural and scenic attractions, and whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road, I declare on behalf of the city council and the city of Temecula, May to be Bike Month. So would you like to take this? Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And so talk to us about our trail system and what's going to happen during Bike Month.
Okay. You want to go first, ma'am?
Sure. So just a couple of dates for Bike Month. May 18th is Bike to Work Day, so all of the city employees will, not all of them, but we hope several, will be participating in Bike to Work Day and that'll be our fifth annual.
Can we have a show of hands up here? Who's going to be biking to work? Oh, I'm getting the hairy eyeball.
We still have a week to recruit.
Ooh, that was a bad look. Okay.
Then Saturday, June 3rd is also National Trails Day, so we have some events planned for that as well. And then just wanted to let everyone know that our 2017 work program for the bike lanes and trails will include 11 to 12 miles of new bike lanes, most of those buffered, a pump track at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, and then working with utility districts to get some of these maintenance roads and these gates open for trails.
That is great.
That's on the horizon for this year.
That pump track's really something. It's like going downhill the whole way.
Yes.
It's my kind of exercise.
Yes.
So Councilmember Niggar, might you be up for something on May 18th?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, good answer. Good, good.
Something. Something.
I'll make you coffee in the morning, right?
Okay.
So I would just like to thank you and the council and city staff for this proclamation. It's sort of, I want to stand up here and soak it in. I was talking to Kevin earlier and we can soak this in because we're at a point now where we're starting to make progress on a lot of these projects and I feel like this is, this is just another notch and this is something that we deserve, that the city deserves. So it is my honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the kids that ride in our bike trains, even our older adults who are riding around town, whether you ride a road bike or a mountain bike, or whether you ride for fun or to work. Just everyone that rides a bike in our city is going to benefit, not just from this proclamation, but from everything that we're talking about with Matt and our bike lanes and trails program. So it's truly an honor to accept this and we appreciate all the hard work, Matt's hard work. Everyone's just, it's just a team effort, so thank you.
Well, thank you Zach and Matt and Mayor Niggar. It really does take cyclists to help us, you know, non-cyclists understand what good bike trails are and, you know, about courtesies and all you drivers out there, please remember to be courteous to our cyclists because we have hundreds of cyclists in Temecula, don't we?
We do. Thousands, actually.
Thousands. So we're going to watch out for them, we're going to share the road. So congratulations, May is Bike Month.
Thank you.
I'll put this on the back of my bike and ride around.
Okay. Yep. Make sure that light's flashing, too. So Mayor Pro Tem, we are going to call up The Bike Shop now for a special presentation and you know what? Maybe, maybe, would you like to go down there and, you know, accept the presentation? On behalf of The Bike Shop?
Me?
Yeah.
Sure.
Sure. So Rick, where's? Yeah. Yeah, you're accepting the bikes. You want to go down, Mike? There are two bikes. Yeah, you need to go. You got two bikes. This is awesome.
Good one. Where are you at?
So thank you Bike Shop.
Oh, mayor and council members and some awesome city managers, Mayor Pro Tem, and Mikey, don't steal that. Thank you guys.
We've got a certificate of recognition for you for this.
Not my fault.
It's good. You want to hear it?
Please.
So this is City of Temecula Certificate of Recognition presented on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Temecula to The Bike Shop. City council is proud to present the certificate of recognition to The Bike Shop for your efforts to support the city's bike lane and trail program and for consistently volunteering on Bike to Work Day. Bike to Work Day, okay, let's remember that now. Bike to Work Day. We appreciate Rick Wessels and his staff at The Bike Shop for their generous donation of two bikes to the city of Temecula employees for promoting the health and wellness of the community. So how's this going to work? I mean, do we leave them at City Hall so people can run errands and ride the bikes or what do we do?
Well, let's, let's do something if you don't mind. Can we call Zach up and Matt up?
Sure.
Real quick, too?
Sure.
So it's actually their fault and, and your fault that we're here tonight with these two bikes for you.
We love that, then.
Matt works really hard, Zach works really hard. You guys have been absolutely phenomenal. So the idea behind giving the bikes to the city and all the employees is to get out and enjoy the bikes, but also to experience some of the pitfalls of riding. I think it'd be a huge educational process, but probably the biggest benefit is there's a local renowned sports doctor who's really fond of saying, "We can take our Prozac orally or we can go out and ride it." So sometimes people need a mental health break. Get out and go for a ride. So Matt has the logistics figured out and he can briefly kind of explain how it's going to work-
Okay.
-in the thing.
So the plan is these bikes will be available at City Hall. We're going to store them at the copy room in the garage until we can get some bike lockers and then we're setting up a reservation system through Microsoft Outlook. So much like you can reserve a conference room, you'll be able to go and reserve the bikes. So if you need to go to the TCC or the theater or whatever, you can, you can hop on a bike and you can reserve the Bike One, which is the medium, or Bike Two, which is the large.
Is there no small?
That's actually a small.
Okay.
That one's true.
Yeah, thanks. That's awesome.
So there'll be a reservation system.
That is great. Well, thank you so much on behalf of the city. So, and I know we have to wear helmets, so we have to have helmets that are going to go along with the bikes, right?
Yes.
And do we have like the little bell that goes on, you know, the little bell that goes on there?
We can get a bell.
Or the little horn that goes, "Ooh, ooh, ooh, ooh." That little horn?
When we get the helmets-
Sweet Sue, too?
Yeah, yeah.
When we get the helmets and the locks together, Matt brought up a good point. I'm going to come down and do a little clinic with some, some key people on, on how to inflate tires properly and how to adjust your helmet properly and do a few little things like that, so. And then if it gets infectious, we'll do more.
Are the times changed now or are these not both girls' bikes?
Well, a lot of men are wearing kilt these days, so they have unisex bikes. So.
I think we should make that a requirement.
It's a, it's a design. It's for easy entry and exit off the bike for running errands and stuff, so it's both a men's and women's bike.
Matt Ron, $1,000 if you put a kilt on and ride that bicycle.
I'll give you $1,000 if you don't.
Okay, next meeting, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
Mike, are you going to join me on that one?
No.
No.
Yeah. Mr. Niggar?
Thank you so much, though. Appreciate it.
A kilt and a bicycle. Thank you, Rick. This is awesome.
Madam Mayor, I just want to point something out that, that I think Bear's mentioned. We don't, we don't see Rick often enough in our, in our chambers, but let me tell you a little bit about The Bike Shop. When he opened up that shop about five years now-
Seven.
Seven years, where would his time go? You know, he had told me, "I want to make it a community bike shop." And so let me tell you, they, they have rides there how many times a week and how many on the weekends? They're, they're always gathering up for all kinds of rides, mountain biking, road biking, and they're really just bringing everybody in the community together. But then this guy goes out and a lot of their members go out, when they go out on the trail, they maintain the trail. And so, you know, they, they do it for people who are going to come behind him and, you know, if you follow this guy on Facebook or The Bike Shop on Facebook, you always see this. He's, he's out there riding, he's got a big pair of clippers with him, making sure the trail's safe. And then he won't tell you, and I don't want to say any secrets, but you know, he's, he's got some health issues, but, but you know what? He's the epitome of walking the, walking the walk, okay? And how to stay healthy and how many Ironmans have you done or tries have you done?
More than I want to admit.
Yeah.
Slowly.
Yeah. And then, and then if you come in the shop, okay, it's just a good place to hang out. I mean, I think they're getting a pickle barrel pretty soon. And what are the, what are the names of the two golden retrievers?
Oh, Sam and Sierra.
Sam and Sierra, okay. I mean, they'll just come in love on you when you go to the shop. Anyway, you've achieved your goal of becoming a community bike shop and you've participated in our Trails Master Plan, our planning, just everything that's going on, all things bike, not only you, but also your team. And, and I just wanted to thank you, okay? And we don't say it often enough, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And really, it's not my fault, it's you guys' fault.
Well, then, thank you, Rick. That's even better. You know, we have something that we need to be reminded of from time to time.
It's a, it's a solemn day today and I want to share something with you about one of our police officers, one of our family members. 24 years ago today on May the 9th, 1993, Riverside County Sheriff's Deputy Kent Hintergard was killed while serving in Temecula as one of our police officers. It was Mother's Day and Deputy Hintergard was dispatched to a domestic violence incident at the Sycamore Terrace Apartments. When he arrived, Deputy Hintergard was not aware the suspect had just killed his girlfriend inside the apartment. When Deputy Hintergard contacted the suspect in the parking lot, an altercation ensued and the suspect shot and killed Deputy Hintergard. Deputy Hintergard was survived by his wife and two daughters. His wife Linda was pregnant with their second child at the time of his death. Recently, one of the residents of the apartment complex, named Carlton Wade, posted a comment on the Officer Down Memorial page dedicated to Kent Hintergard. Mr. Wade posted it under the heading "Family That Will Never Forget." And here's what he said. "I'm the person who called 911 that night. My wife, two young sons, and myself lived below the apartment where the woman was murdered. I met Officer Hintergard as he arrived and told him what had taken place upstairs. Then the suspect, then the suspect was walking down the other walkway, leaving, and Officer Hintergard asked me if that was him. I said yes, and he told me to leave the area and he would handle it from there. I stayed behind the pool house as he talked to the man. Then I heard the radio in his car, and that's when I heard a click and a shot a second later. I came from around the pool house and I didn't see Officer Hintergard at first. I just saw the suspect look at me. At that very moment, the backup car was coming around the complex road and he ran towards his car. My wife and I held Officer Hintergard until other units and paramedics arrived. I blamed myself for years for ever calling 911. But as I've grown older, I now know that what life I have, what freedom and protection people have are because of great men like Officer Hintergard. Men who understand the risk and sacrifice so much that we can live in a better community. We don't celebrate Mother's Day in our home for obvious reasons. We choose that day to remember Officer Hintergard and the ones he left behind. God bless them. So let us make sure we never forget Deputy Hintergard and his sacrifice. It's also important to remember the other victim killed on that tragic day. The young woman who was killed just prior to Deputy Hintergard's arrival was named Allison Ally Jacobs. Ally's mom, Diane Bainbridge, later joined our local nonprofit, SAFE, Safe Alternatives for Everyone. Ally is the namesake for SAFE's recently opened Ally's Resale Shop. You can find more information about Ally's Resale Shop at safefamilies.org if you're interested. Every year, there's a ceremony to remember the sacrifice of Riverside County law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. In addition to honoring Deputy Kent Hintergard from Temecula PD, we also have Riverside County Constable Preston Van Buren Swanglin, who was killed in the line of duty on December 24th in 1907. He was shot while trying to break up a fight at a pool hall in Old Town. Constable Swanglin is one of the first law enforcement officers killed in our county and he's buried in the Temecula Public Cemetery. The community is always welcome to join us as we pay tribute to these fallen heroes. This year's ceremony will be held on Monday, May 22nd at 5:45 PM at the SAFE in His Arms Memorial located at 4102 Orange Street in Riverside. And we will put this up on the city website just so that you can attend if you'd like to. But we talk about all the time at the, at the federal level, freedom isn't free and freedom isn't free at the local level either. And we have walking heroes that are here to demonstrate that they are ready to sacrifice themselves for the citizens of Temecula, just like Officer Hintergard and Officer Swanglin. So let us remember Kent Hintergard today. Thank you. All right, we can move on now. Do we have any public comments to start?
Madam Mayor, we have one public comment under non-aggendized items.
All right. So a total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. All right.
Madam Mayor, the only public speaker under non-agendized items is Mark Caton.
Hi, Mark. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you. For those of you that had the opportunity to attend Taste of Temecula Valley the last weekend in April, I appreciate those of you that came, and appreciate the city's support of our event and enabling me to speak and ask for people to come and join us. Stu, thank you for showing up. But there's so many people that make this happen each year, and I really appreciate the support of the city, Kevin, and your staff. Dawn is amazing, as always, and really makes the event go off smooth. We appreciate the support from police and everything that we get from the city. It's just amazing. So, I just really want to thank the city and let you know we had another successful event, and that's going to produce more money going back to the schools again this year. So, very, very special. So, thank you so much for your support. Mark your calendars now, April 27th and 28th, 2018. Okay? Get your phones out. Mark it on your calendar.
7/28, okay, I got it.
Okay, 27/28. We'll be back, and I'll be back before that quite a few times, I'm sure. But we've got some exciting new things happening for Temecula Education Foundation, and I'll be back to talk to you about all of those and get your support again, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mark, and everyone on your committee for putting on such a fabulous event. And really, it all does go back for education and to supplement those things that the schools can no longer provide for our kids.
Arts, sciences, technology, and performing arts.
Thank you, sir.
Over there. Thank you.
It's time for a City Council report. I don't see anyone in the queue yet. Oh, there we go. Mayor Protem Ron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to, before Alice leaves, you can't sneak out of here that quick. Alice, I just wanted to congratulate you once again, and just let you know it was an honor for myself, Aaron Adams, and Christine Damco to put together the letter of nomination for you. And we're so proud of you, and so thrilled that you're representing our city so well. So, again, wonderful, congratulations, and thank you so much for all you do.
Yay.
The, no applause. The other one is, I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Lori Hoopeng Gardner. My wife and I joined her team this past weekend for the American Heart Association Southwest Riverside Heart and Stroke Walk at Lake Skinner. And despite all the wonderful rain and incredible wind, we still had a great turnout at the event. And Lori's an amazing person, and just look forward to participating in that event next year. Thanks.
Anyone else? Nobody's in the queue? All right, then we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted with one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolution. Number two, approve the action minutes of April 25th, 2017. Number three, approve the list of demands. Number four, approve the city treasurer's report as of March 31st, 2017. Number five, approve the purchase of GTAC T800 Mini Rugged Tables/Tablets with Golden Star Technology, Inc. for the Temecula Police Department. Number six, approve the sponsorship and economic development funding agreement with the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival Association for the 2017 Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival at the request of Economic Development Subcommittee members Comacherow and Edwards. Number seven, approve the first amendment to the agreement for contractor services with St. Francis Electric LLC for on-call traffic signal maintenance services. Number eight, approve the amendments to annual agreements for fiscal year 2017-18 for routine maintenance and emergency services for various operational needs by the Department of Public Works Maintenance Division. Number nine, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the pavement rehabilitation program, Overland Drive, Jefferson Avenue to Commerce Center Drive, PW 12-15. Number 10, approve plans and specifications and authorize the solicitation of construction bids for the Temecula Children's Museum Roof Rehabilitation, PW 16-02. And...
Move consent.
I got a motion and a second.
Well, could I get a brief clarification on item number five?
Sure. We don't want to pull it, but you just got a quick question.
Yeah, well, I just want to, if staff or even the police chief can tell us a little bit about what these devices do for us.
Okay, then let's pull this item.
Okay.
And go ahead, and I want to amend your motion to approve the balance without number five. Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, so Jeff, and then I need a second for everything but number five.
I'll second.
Okay, and now cast your votes. All right, and that's unanimous. And then, if I could have somebody give a staff report on number five, and tell us about these rugged-sounding tablets?
Madam Mayor, I think it'd be appropriate if we have Chief Kubel just to provide a brief.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome. Our motor officers have old technology, the devices they use to issue citations. The vendor that we use requires a certain tablet. Technology's changed, and what we have previously is outdated, and they can't use them anymore. So we need the new tablets so that they can continue using the software and issuing citations.
So these aren't like iPads?
Oh, no. Well, they're tablets, but they're not iPad brand. They're a different brand.
Okay, all right. And does it actually link up with your mainframe? So when they do write a ticket, it actually goes straight to?
It goes to the vendor.
Okay.
And it's all hooked up with the software, so it basically tracks everything and keeps everything in one database. But it's the whole entire sheriff's department, every contract city has to go to the new tablets, otherwise we can't issue citations via an electronic device anymore. We have to go back to paper sites again.
Okay. All right.
Are we good?
Good.
All right. Thank you, Chief Kubel. Okay, so, no questions, then?
Item five.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion and second on item five, and do we need to do voice vote? Randy, are we good? And thank you, that is unanimous. So, I am going to recess the City Council meeting and hand it over to Councilmember Comacherow, who is now President Comacherow of the Temecula Community Services District.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here tonight, so let's dispense with the roll. Do we have any public comment? Thank you. We have two items under consent calendar. Item 11, approve the action minutes of April 25th, 2017. And item 12, approve annual agreements for services for various community services, departments, events, classes, programs, and activities for fiscal year 2017-18.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion does carry unanimously. Mr. Hawkins, what have you got for us tonight?
Mr. President, a couple of quick reminders. Look for the new guide to leisure activities in your mailboxes this week, with registration beginning on Monday, excuse me, on Monday, at 8:00 AM for over 100 enrichment summer camp offerings for youth and teens. And also a reminder to mark your calendars and join us at the Temecula Duck Pond on Monday, May 29th, for our annual Memorial Day observance in remembrance of those fallen heroes in service to our country. And that concludes my report. And I learned how to say Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Adams, anything?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Any board member reports tonight? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any objection? We stand adjourned.
All right, then I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we have a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the City Council before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item number 13, approve an amendment to the Temecula Municipal Code prohibiting all commercial marijuana activity in the city and amending regulations pertaining to marijuana cultivation, implementing Proposition 64, the Control, Regulate, and Tax Adult Use of Marijuana Act. All right, could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Edwards, City Council, and executive staff. Before we get into the ordinance itself, I wanted to give a little bit of background and purpose as to why we're going forward tonight with this. The purpose of this tonight is to take a procedural pause for the city. We want to preserve the city's right to regulate marijuana activities within the city under Prop 64, and allow for additional research and outreach to occur. A little bit of background with the, some historical background with legalizing marijuana in California. In 1996, California voters adopted Proposition 215, which allowed the use of marijuana for medical purposes under certain circumstances. In 2006, the city adopted ordinance number 0605, which amended sections of the municipal code prohibiting medical marijuana dispensaries in all zones within the city. In 2015, governor signed into law three bills comprising the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. And as a result of the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, the City Council adopted ordinance 16-01. This ordinance added Chapter 8.52, which prohibited the cultivation of marijuana in all zones within the city. It included a limited exemption for primary caregivers of qualified patients, and for qualified patients for the cultivation of a small amounts of marijuana for their own medical use. That medical marijuana cultivation is only allowed on parcels with single-family detached residents. 12 plants per qualified patient, or primary caregiver for qualified patients, with a maximum of 24 plants per single-family residence. It may be grown indoors or outdoors, and there are additional regulations that do apply. This past November in 2016, California voters adopted or passed the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, otherwise known as Prop 64. It creates a state regulatory licensing system for the sale and taxation, commercial cultivation, manufacturing, testing, and distribution of marijuana. It legalizes non-medical use of marijuana by adults, persons of age 21 years or older, and it allows the cultivation of up to six plants indoors for recreational purposes. The Adult Use of Marijuana Act allows local governments to adopt and enforce local ordinances to regulate recreational marijuana businesses, including, but not limited, to prohibiting commercial marijuana activities in businesses, establishing local zoning and land use requirements, establishing business license requirements. And it does not allow local governments to prohibit the transportation of marijuana on public roads that pass through the city. It does not allow local governments to prohibit cultivation of six plants within a fully enclosed and secure private residence or secured accessory structure. In response to the Adult Use of Medical, or I'm sorry, Adult Use of Marijuana Act, the City Council established the Marijuana Subcommittee with Mayor Protem Ron and Councilmember Nigar. The Subcommittee recommended that further research and outreach is necessary, and that the city preserve its options by considering an ordinance that prohibits commercial marijuana activities while this additional research and outreach can occur. And then, at the conclusion of that additional outreach and education, amended ordinance may be prepared and presented to the Planning Commission and City Council for their consideration. The City Council considered the recommendation by the Subcommittee on February 28th, 2017, and directed staff to conduct further research while monitoring the outcome of the pending state legislation, as well as changing federal government enforcement policies. City Council also directed staff to prepare an ordinance preserving the city's right to regulate, license, or prohibit, and/or prohibit, recreational marijuana and marijuana activities. The proposed ordinance before you tonight would prohibit commercial marijuana activities in the city, which is defined as the cultivation, possession, manufacture, distribution, processing, storing, laboratory, testing, labeling, transportation, delivery, and sale of marijuana and marijuana products, whether or not for profit. The proposed ordinance would prohibit all uses involving commercial marijuana activity anywhere in the city. It prohibits recreational marijuana cultivation outdoors. It allows the cultivation of up to six marijuana plants indoors only for recreational purposes, which is consistent with the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. The proposed ordinance would not change or alter ordinance 16-01, which provides that limited exemption that I covered earlier, for the cultivation of medical marijuana by qualified patients and caregivers of qualified patients. Planning Commission reviewed the proposed ordinance on April 5th, 2017. Commission voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve an ordinance amending municipal code prohibiting all commercial marijuana activity within the city. This project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3. And the recommendation before you tonight is to adopt an ordinance amending the municipal code to prohibit all commercial marijuana activity within the city. And that concludes my staff report, and staff's available for questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? No? Stu?
So, if someone were delivering marijuana from outside the city into Temecula, is that an illegal activity?
That would be an illegal activity, per the ordinance. The distinction is, the transportation through the city is a point of origin from outside the city to a point of destination outside the city. Any transportation or delivery within the city that originates within the city, and the destination is within the city, is not allowed by the ordinance.
Okay, but you just stated, if it started in the city, yeah, so anywhere to the city is illegal.
That's correct.
Got it.
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, so, no further questions? All right, then, I'm going to open the public hearing, and do we have any public comments?
We do, Madam Mayor. We have six public speakers.
All right.
The first speaker is Peter Ingersoll, to be followed by Ricky Ingersoll.
Mr. Ingersoll, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Edwards, City Council, and staff, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Peter Ingersoll. I'm a lifelong entrepreneur, I'm a real estate broker. I have many real estate clients in the Temecula Valley here. Although I'm not a resident, I've come to, I've grown to love this valley. Every time I come over and come down, it's a beautiful place to live. And I have to say, you guys have done an amazing job managing the growth of this city. My interest is as a cannabis advocate. And first of all, I want to applaud the planning staff and the planning commissioners for the work they did, and also the city attorney. There's nothing I disagree with in the presentation, and the ordinances you've written are quite good. And I think it is appropriate that you take a procedural pause. For an issue this complex, for an industry that's moving so rapidly and changing so fast, and the discoveries that we're stumbling across on the medical side, all need to be There's no doubt, at least in my mind, that prohibition of cannabis at the federal level is going to end soon, when I don't know. In my view, the California ordinances have done something extremely proactive for the local municipalities, and they've given the local municipalities the power to regulate it in your own town. And they've done something else which I happen to like, and that is, they've put a lot of the power of the industry into the hands of the entrepreneur. The ordinances were, the law was specifically written to favor the entrepreneur and prevent vertical integration of large corporations. This valley is full of entrepreneurs, which excites me because I don't have that much interest in the recreational side of the business. My focus is on the medical side. The medical side, I think we will see in the next three to five, 10 years, will dwarf the recreational side. Just this month, finally, one agency of the government acknowledged National Institute of Cancer, the medical benefit of cannabis, including THC. The, the medical research that's coming out is astounding from all over the world, but also from UC San Diego, is a, a large cancer research center using cannabis and cannabinoids. I see a, a tremendous industry forming to bring this plant into the light again. And the primary of the research, there's so much to discuss, I don't have time, but let me just give you one phrase, if you hadn't heard this before, it's called the endocannabinoid system. Why does cannabis seem to impact positively so many different maladies? And it's because all of us have an endocannabinoid system, it's made up of trillions of neural cells. The cannabis, what cannabinoids do is they regulate our endocrine system. Most of the research that's taking place worldwide is to try to figure out what molecules impact what maladies, and as that data grows, and it's growing very rapidly, we're going to find cures and treatments for many, many ailments. That's why I'm so excited, and I support the procedural pause, and I've prepared some data on some of the medical benefits for the council, which I'll distribute to the city clerk in a second. And if there's any way for a non-Temecula resident to volunteer on the Subcommittee or in any other capacity, I'd be happy to put my hat in the ring. Thank you.
Thank you very much, you may give that to the city clerk.
The next speaker is Ricky Ingersoll, to be followed by Skylar Temple.
Good evening, I'm Ricky Ingersoll. Thank you for being here, I really appreciate a good council, and it seems like you really think things through, and that's really wonderful. I'm going to give a personal note to cannabis. First, I had an experience with cannabis about twelve years ago, I'd been in a wheelchair for six years. I had polio as a child, and a million five of us had polio come back after we were fifty-five, and I ended up in a wheelchair, and I was in extreme pain. I had a doctor friend who did a lot of HIV treatment with cannabis at that time, that was about thirteen years ago, and he said, "My symptoms were just too much like a viral infection," which is what post-polio, which is what polio is. So he wanted me to have cannabis. I'd been on fourteen different oxy drugs, I'd been on maybe thirteen other system failure drugs, and so I was in really terrible shape. He gave me a sugar cube of a brownie, and I didn't have pain for two days. So I went to Oyster Dam, I was in the Bay Area, and got a degree in cannabis, and started to figure out what it was that was going to help me. And what I ended up being treated with was a compound in the plant called CBD. It's a cannabinoid that is specifically for pain and neurological pain, which is what I had, my nerves were dying. So after about six to eight months, I was off all my pain meds, and I was also out of a wheelchair. We sold the wheelchair van, we sold my scooter, we sold my wheelchair, and I started walking, and I started exercising, and I started enjoying life again, and I never got high, because CBD does not make you high. And I took it as a tincture. Now, I thought it was going to be pain control, but what it really did is it brought back my cognitive abilities, it repaired my brain, and it started repairing my nerves. So my nerves and my legs got repaired, and I could stand here like I am right now and talking to you, and I can walk three or four miles, and that is really great. And the other part of my personal story is, three years ago, I got lung cancer. So lung cancer, I have a hereditary cancer, and with the viral infection of polio, which makes me have an autoimmune condition, my body is a perfect Petri dish for cancer. So what I did is I did complete integrative medicine, no chemo, no radiation, and no traditional medicine except for surgery. And what I used is many different, combination of different treatments that I researched, I did genetic research, I have a juris doctorate, and I do medical research, so I was pretty good at that. And I do a combination, I am in remission, I'm traditionally undetectable, my lungs are clear, they were black ground glass with lesions and scars, and they are clear. And now I'm in remission, and because I have a hereditary cancer, it means I have circulating cancer cells at a five percent range, which is a new test that they can tell you exactly how many circulating cells that you have in your blood system, and five percent is significant. So I'm always in remission and trying to keep in remission, and one of the, I have about seven different treatments that I use with cannabis. I use THC at night to prepare and kill my circulating cancer cells, and that is a very strong dose, and it puts me to sleep, and I wake up and I have no residual. I use THCA, which is unde-comboxated, I have-
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, so as you can see, I have a cocktail that I'm doing, I don't smoke it, I don't, I don't eat it, I have a, it's done in pills, it's done in, just like any other pharmaceutical. So that is my personal story, and I see a lot of people die from cancer. One in two males will get a serious cancer, and forty percent of you will die in your lifetime.
And your time is up, Mrs. Ingersoll.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. And I too would like to volunteer if you would like to have me.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So, all these cocktails, are they extracted from the marijuana plant itself?
Yes, well, some are raw, so, and some are from hemp. And yes, they're all extracted, some are tinctures, some are pills, some are gummy bears. So it just really depends on the condition you have on how you're supposed to treat it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Skylar Temple, to be followed by Judy Joseph.
Mr. Temple, good to see you again.
Good to see you again. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and quite a large number of guests tonight. As I voiced here previously, I applaud now, as I've further understood it, the procedural pause. As it stands right now, we will not have commercial legisla, or commercial sales until 2018, until the regulatory body is enacted. As I've said before, my main concern was making sure a reg, a procedural pause does not become an indefinite termination. Now, again, and your story, your story reaches right to my heart, because my grandmother, she's eighty-five years old, and three weeks ago, we found out she was terminal with lung cancer. Now, she's lived a long, happy life, but because of her, her fear of marijuana, because she, she knows the federal government, she says it's illegal, I don't want that, but she's in a lot of pain, so we, we, we give her morphine. She becomes almost unresponsive, she's, I can't talk to her in her last days and weeks. I, I want to end the stigma against marijuana, and as you've said, there are benefits that are there, but the stigma that has plagued my grandmother is making it so I, the last days that I see her are worst. Those, those are not, that's not how you should see someone leaving this life, ever. The stigma should end, and the city can do a fantastic job at being a role model in this, Justice of the State is taking this, this leap and bound, because as, as it's been said, we don't know when, but the federal, the federal prohibition will end, because the evidence is growing of its benefits. So let's be that proactive city, Temecula, California, the city that broke the norm and decided to stand up for its citizens who are in pain, who need this to ensure that they can go painless and live a happy life. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Judy Joseph, to be followed by Debbie Arce.
Ms. Joseph, how are you? Fine. Mayor and council, thank you for listening to me today. My name's Judy Joseph, and this is not nineteen thirty-four, free from madness, but we're still legislating as if it is, and that propaganda is hard, hard to get around. So after thousands of studies documenting the benefits of cannabis, the government still hangs on to the big pharma. We have to, we have to generate it through drugs, not natural. And I'm here tonight to bring focus on by voting, I can see taking a pause, but by voting to eliminate it from the lives of people within your city, what you're doing to hurt them. I've got some basic things. My mom's ninety-one years old, she has neuropathy. She was getting where she couldn't walk, constant pain, couldn't watch TV without the needles shooting up her legs. She is now on THCA, she takes it at night before she goes to bed, she's out of pain. Ninety-one years old. You want to take that away from her? My neighbor, Patrick Haley, he's eighty-three, he had horrible, horrible skin damage from sun and misuse and what all, just he had, he had hard calciums on his skin, and threw hemp-induced oil, or infused oil and topicals. He's clear now. We got him off of his codone, oxycodone, and he takes a THC tablet. He's off the hard drugs. The response of, of, of years, and we want to say twenty years of oxycodone, this man was making decisions in his life that have, will affect him until he's dead, financial decisions. And it was brought on because of his thinking abilities were hindered through the oxycodone. He's off of it now. My dog, fourteen-year-old dog, who I love, he's wonderful, he has seizures. He's a dog, give him phenobarbital, has a seizure, give him more. The dog was drugged, he couldn't get up, couldn't walk, he was miserable. He now is on a twenty-to-one CBD. He thinks he's four, he's enjoying life, he's not having seizures, and I want to keep him on it. My friend, T-Rod, thirty years as a lifeguard for the state of California, you can imagine his skin cancers on his skin, he has just agreed to go on hemp-induced or infused oils and the pharmaceutical topical, or not the pharmaceutical, the hemp topicals to help him get away. He, he won't show his skin, and I feel so bad, he's sixty, he's seventy, and he should enjoy his life, he should enjoy his body, he should enjoy, you know, the service that he gave the state of California, and not be hindered and not be able to get the medicine. Myself, my blood pressure is controlled through CBD. Fifteen milligrams, twenty-to-one, I take it twice a day, my blood pressure was up to over two hundred and a hundred and twenty. They were sending me to cardiologists, they said I had a heart condition. Well, I no longer have a heart condition, I no longer have blood pressure over a hundred and thirty-five, over seventy-four, and it's consistent. Don't take that away from me. My medication that I was taking, it was affecting my, 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 my legs, it was affecting my brain, it gave me a headache every day in the back of my head. I no longer have that, I feel good, and I like that feeling, and I know I'm not high, I've never done recreational. But you're not just doing recreational, you're taking away my medicine and my ability to have it. Take a break, but don't eliminate my ability to have this drug or this medicine. You're elected, what are you going to do? I mean, what, 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 what's the overall effect that you think you might see by restricting it in your city? We're not going to be able to get good, tested, formulated medicine. We're going to have people shoving it under the carpet, underground, and I want to know that what I'm getting is formulated, tested, whole plant, and it's going to be consistent every time I buy it. I have that now, don't take it away from me. So, our needs are high, your decisions are important, and they're not just saying-
And your time is up.
-we don't want our kids to get high. You're saying you don't want me to have my medicine, please think about it, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Debbie Arce, to be followed by Greg Jeldon.
Good evening.
Hello, hello, Mayor, and fellow councilmen and staff, I really appreciate you listening to us tonight. I represent a company that makes these tinctures and products that some of these constituents you've heard tonight talk about. I represent a collective, we operate not-for-profit, we make tinctures, topicals, creams, and we put extract, marijuana in our extract, we make capsules using marijuana as the ingredient. It's made by an extract, we extract the plant, we put those extracts in products that patients use to heal themselves. We serve many patients in the city of Temecula. Many of our patients, they're literally dropped at the edge of town by their physicians and by the healthcare system that they're in right now. They've tried what their doctors prescribed to them, and it's not working. Most people just don't start and say, "Oh, I want to start cannabis, I just got diagnosed with cancer," and they go straight to us. Normally, they are treated by their physician, they go undergo, they go undergo chemo, and they have devastating results, and that's really a shame as it stands. But we have patients in this community suffering from autism, epilepsy, PTSD, immune deficiencies, Crohn's disease, fibromyalgia, and neuropathy, people suffering from cancer, people with tumors, the list goes on. I literally just grabbed that list of conditions from my group members that live in Temecula. Most of our products create little to no psychoactivity, they don't get you high, and that's what we, we strive to do. There is a recreational component to marijuana, I understand that, but my business is not a storefront dispensary. I just need about a thousand to fifteen-hundred square feet of commercial property where I can make my product, to distribute my product in this area. The stories you're hearing tonight from constituents are from stories I hear every day in my little operation. I just got one a few days ago from a man named Ryan, our office received it. He said, "Hello, I'm contacting you and Julie, your products are amazing, my mom has had psoriasis for years and has been taking shots. I went to the dispensary in Temecula and got the cream, within a few days, it was much better and has been working ever since. My mom has been against marijuana since I started growing my own and swore by the benefits. You guys helped make her fully trust in the product, I'm so happy it's working for her, she was in a lot of pain, I love you guys for that, to be able to provide her relief is amazing." This is what makes us get up every morning and make our products, even though we have to hide the location where we make them. to hide the location where we make them. As of today, the closest cities where we can try and manufacture our product in a licensed location is either Cathedral City or the city of San Diego, because their councils had the foresight to create legislation around monitoring their cannabis businesses instead of forcing them to operate in the shadows. They're receiving local taxation. You can talk to the city of Cathedral City, because they're starting to receive it. We do pay sales tax, by the way. We keep making our products because our email boxes are filled with emails, like email boxes like these. I hope that you really receive these kinds of emails eventually in your email boxes, because it really is rewarding to get these over and over again. And I sometimes say, I can't believe it. I mean, again, it happened to get, that, that can't be. When we have, when I first started getting into this business, it was unbelievable. Anyway, I think it speaks for itself. There is that confusion between marijuana and recreational, and I think that there's a way that we can live together. I think we've been medical for years. You guys are just now noticing that we are maybe acknowledging that we've been operating, but we've had the right to do so. It's just been a zoning violation for what we've done so far. We're not permitted-
15 seconds, Debbie.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Greg Jeldon, to be followed by Laura Lintisdale.
Hello, good evening. My name's Greg Jeldon. I appreciate you giving me some time to speak with you guys tonight. I'm here because I am against the ordinance. And the reason why I'm against the ordinance is because I believe it's a health and safety issue. By choosing not to regulate and tax commercial cannabis businesses, our city, and I'm a resident of the city, will continue to get illegal grows and illegal highly volatile butane extraction labs, which I'm sure are already happening. With illegal grows and illegal labs, you invite more crime into the residential neighborhoods, including money laundering, tax evasion, theft of electricity, residential burglary, and homicide. 100% of illegal grows are dumping illegal toxic waste into the water treatment plants that you guys manage on a daily basis. Most illegal grows and labs are operated by people who may or may not have felonies, and without regulation, you won't be able to find that out. Illegal labs are a public safety concern because they're highly explosive and have already been linked to numerous injuries and even death. Individuals that own rental properties in your city will continue to have their properties vandalized from modifications that they don't approve and are illegal, done by these growers in order to steal power and/or create deadly pathogens like black mold from cultivating plants indoors without proper ventilation and atmosphere controls. Illegal marijuana growers do not care if the person consuming their marijuana is of legal age, if it's been tested, if it's clean, if it's healthy for them. They're about making money. Illegal growers do not care what chemicals or pesticides and fungicides they spray on their plants, which is a huge public safety concern, because cannabis is harmful and potentially lethal to anybody that consumes it with pesticides and fungicides and these illegal sprays. You can easily see that regulating and taxing is the best path for your city, for our city. This will ensure the public safety while creating massive revenue, and I'm sure that you guys aren't super concerned with revenue. But as a public safety issue, I want to make sure that my children have a safe place to live. And currently, right now, all of the cannabis businesses, all of the people that you've heard tonight, and a lot of people that you don't know about, are operating within your city illegally. That means you guys have no control of the situation, and I think that that is scary to me. As people who are supposed to be in control of this situation, this is a major, major safety concern to me. So I don't think I'm going to take three minutes of your guys' time tonight. That's all I have to say. I thank you very much, and you guys have a great evening.
Thank you, Greg.
The next speaker is Laura Lintisdale, to be followed by Lori Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening. We've been a resident family of this valley for over 25 years, raised my three children here. My middle child, Elliot, is 27 years old now, and he has autism, and he has epilepsy since he was about 11 or 12 years old, which has been treated with pharmaceuticals. About a year and a half ago, he started an additional seizure-like behavior, very frightening with no warning. We went to his local neurologist, and it was suggested we look into either an additional pharmaceutical or CBD, which we did. But the behaviors continued and they accelerated to the point that last month, he was admitted to Temecula Valley Hospital when the seizures were going two minutes apart for several hours on end, and they could not stop them. He was transferred by ambulance to UCSD Intensive Care Neurological Unit for further diagnosis to figure out what was causing it. And the team of neurologists there, one of them said to me, I can't prescribe it, of course, but if this were my son, I would look into medical marijuana for him. So after his discharge, where, by the way, they discovered these were seizure-like behaviors, could not be controlled in the conventional way that seizures are controlled, I came back. And last week, I was licensed in Temecula as a caregiver and my son for medical marijuana. I have never used it, despite its popularity in my high school or college years among my friends, know nothing about it. I've spent the last two weeks researching everything I could find about it, and actually found out about this meeting today when I was talking to a local delivery dispenser about it. I will say that the doctors I've talked to, all they can say is, we recommend it, look into it. They know nothing about it. They say, go find that out on the internet or from dispensers, because they don't know. The information is from these people you're trying to shut down. They have a wealth of information. And I also found, as an aside, that it has antibacterial properties and has cured Lyme disease. A few years back, we had a gluten-free bakery in downtown Temecula, and I had many customers who came to buy gluten-free goods because the anti-inflammatory food was recommended for those with Lyme disease. And I had testimonials from people locally who said they caught Lyme disease with the Target Bullseye and everything on the Santa Rosa Plateau while hiking. Our son got ticks out of his, from our vineyard in Wine Country. So Lyme disease is a local problem that can be treated by medical marijuana. So I urge you to do everything you can to make it available.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Lori Brown.
Hi, Lori.
Well, I'm listening to you guys say you need research, so I'm my own research. I did pharmaceutical drugs after having hot flashes for about 10 or 11 years. Both FDA-approved drugs. The trial was, how did they work together? At the end of 14 months, I had hormone-positive breast cancer. That's how they worked together. So I started immediately on cannabis oil, and there is a conflict with hormone-positive breast cancer. Some people say you need higher THC, some say higher CBD, most say one-to-one is fine. The first MRI, the tumor was a centimeter and a half. The second MRI, three months later, hadn't gotten bigger, but it hadn't gotten smaller. I talked to a nurse, oncology nurse that now worked with cannabis. She said three-to-one more CBD than THC, but gave me a huge dose, and I was pretty much stoned four times a day. So I wasn't working. I couldn't really drive. You know, there was an hour and a half after I would take it. I would be stoned for an hour and a half to two hours. Then I talked to a doctor that is now working with cannabis, and he said, oh, I think one-to-one is fine, but you only need 100 milligrams a day, and then that would be 25 milligrams less THC than the nurse had recommended. But after five weeks on that, I went to a doctor that felt the tumor for the first time, and she said, I think it's 1.7 centimeters, and that was the first time I felt it. So I agreed to go to a surgeon. I didn't want it in my lymph nodes. And I went to a surgeon, and she said, okay, we need to get this out of here. Probably five weeks later, the very next day, I went back on three-to-one CBD, but I did a much lower dose, 150 milligrams a day, three doses, didn't feel a thing. I could have stood next to any other uncoordinated person and passed the same sobriety test that they passed. And I did that for a little less than eight weeks. Five weeks in, I went to the oncologist, and she said, well, you're stage one for sure. It's less than a centimeter. Two and a half weeks later, the surgeon said, I can't feel it. And I said, well, why don't I just keep doing what I'm doing? And she said, no, 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 we got to get it out. And it was all scheduled for the next day, and I knew that would have messed up a few people's schedules. But what she removed was a one-half-centimeter tumor. So thank you, Julie and Debbie. It shrunk, and I don't need anybody to tell me anything different than this works. I could care less about recreational cannabis. I was sober for 29 and a half years when I had to start using this. And I really don't care about that. I didn't think it should be on the ballot before they knew what the hell they were doing, but they put it on there anyway and then said, oh, but wait. So I, I've just, I saw someone in a state where it wasn't legal that had glioblastoma brain cancer, and he shrunk it by 75%. His neurologist knew about it, his oncologist knew about it, his neurologist didn't. His neurologist was having to take fluid out where the tumor had shrunk, and they had to get him off the cannabis oil before he could go into surgery, because they were going to medicate him. And when he came out and they put him back on it, he was a little too happy, and he got drug tested. And his mother freaked out and said, they're going to kick him off hospice. Well, everybody's goal was get him off hospice, but she forbade, forbade everybody from giving him anything, and it came back with a vengeance. Three months later, he was dead. But he was supposed to be dead a year and a half before that. So had I known what I know now, when my mom had Parkinson's, she would have been using it. My husband has had linear psoriasis since 2001. He started using it, and it looks better than it ever has. And my dad has neuropathy. He's been using it. It helps with that. And, you know, I get the whole danger, danger thing, but I, I take plants to a lab in Temecula to have them tested. I don't know where else to go. And contradictory to what that man said about the mold and the this and the that, people do get their products tested before they give them to their patients. So I'm all for it, and I think it's saving people's lives, and I think that's something that really needs to be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so no further requests to speak, and we are in a public hearing, so was there anyone who wanted to speak that did not fill out a slip? Come on. What's a public hearings for? We want it, but you, you know, after you're finished, just grab a slip. So tell us your name and where you're from.
Hi, I live in Temecula. My name's Leigh Ann Hardesty, and I'm here tonight because my husband is dying, and I'm his caregiver. And he has a stage-four cancer. So we've tried a lot of Western medical treatments, and it's been very difficult. He has a lot of side effects from the drug chemotherapy and things like nausea and basically it, he's, you know, he was so sick from the side effects of the drugs that he just sits there with his head in his hand and in pain, in a lot of pain. So we heard about our right to medical marijuana, and so we got, we went through the process to get our cards, and we got some, and then we were advised from some really knowledgeable people here tonight on what to do and how to take it and what, kind of how to manage it, because there's really no, there's really no doctor to advise us. So, so now, he's been taking it, he's been on a program for about a week, and I can tell you, it's a miracle. It's, it's like he's almost, he almost seems normal. I mean, I know he still has the cancer, but he almost seems normal. He's out of most of the pain. He's not nauseous anymore. He can eat. I'm telling you, when your spouse can't eat because they're so sick, that is so, that is so worrying, like, it makes a wife worry so much. And, you know, you start to worry, and then when you see, when you see this transformation because of this medicine, it's remarkable. It's, it's just, it's just remarkable. It's unbelievable. So, you know, I know there are a lot of smart people here tonight. I mean, this panel, the best of the best, and I implore you to find a way to make medical marijuana available to this, to the people, the constituents in this city, because I really don't think it's necessary to have it available for recreational purposes. That's my personal opinion, but because it is medicine, it is absolutely imperative to find a way, whatever you have to do. If you have to regulate, or if you have to, to change the way that these businesses are doing business, if you have to make it more difficult for access to this medicine, then do it. If you, if you have the, if you have the legal capacity to do that, city attorney, if, if there's a legal capacity to do that, then do it. I implore you to find a way, because we, the, the people that have spoken before me and, and my husband, we really need access to this, and local access. I'm a caregiver. You don't know what I had to do to be here tonight, okay? Because he's at home, and it's hard for me to get to the grocery store. I had to quit my job because I wanted to take care of him. So it's very challenging as a caregiver to get out and, and, and get what we need, even groceries. And so to make me go somewhere else, to make me travel to the city of San Diego or somewhere, I don't even know what I'm going to do. But to make me travel to get this is a hardship and a burden. And you guys are, you guys are smart people, so please, I implore you to find a way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hardesty. So no further speakers, correct? All right, so we'll close the public hearing. Peter, could I get some clarification, please? And I, while we've been listening, I've, I've read through everything again. What impact is this going to have on people like Mrs. Hardesty's husband who are using oils and things like that?
Well, currently, medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of Temecula are prohibited, and they have been since 2006. A lot of the medical testing and the other companies that will process and prepare those things are, will, are subject to state regulation. So at the present time, with this, right now, they're, they're not allowed in the city of Temecula, and this ordinance will continue that until such time as the, the state allows them. And then, as I understand, that's part of your plan, is that between now and beginning of 2018, you're going to be taking a very in-depth look at these facilities and what should be allowed and what should not be allowed. So this is really just continuing in effect the prohibition on medical marijuana dispensaries, and then also allowing you to look in great detail at all of the other commercial marijuana activities that are, are beginning to take hold in the state.
So this still allows what our ordinance was, and that was the growing of 12 plants per, per person or per caregiver?
That's correct.
If you want, if you want to grow your own for medicinal use, if you have a medical marijuana card. So what-
And you, you enacted that in response to a lot of the patients that came to you back in the early part of 2016 requesting that-
Correct.
-as, as their, their vehicle to get that medicine.
Okay, so what impact does it have on, on people like Mrs. Hardesty if she, if there's no dispensary in Temecula, but her, she's able to acquire this drug someplace else? Is it illegal for her to have that drug and have her husband use that drug in Temecula?
Yeah, as long as she has a card and, and her husband has the card, then there's nothing illegal about using it in Temecula. The illegality is the dispensary and using it for recreational purpose. The illegality is the dispensary and using it for recreational purposes.
Okay, so, really-
Or I should say, dispensing it for recreational purposes.
Okay, so, we're talking about dispensing it for recreational purposes because it's not legal under state law for them to dispense it for medical purposes right now?
Right, right now, it is not legal to dispense it for any reason in the city of Temecula.
Okay.
Medical marijuana is legal to use, but it's not legal to dispense it in the city of Temecula.
Okay, so-
In 2018, when the state puts its regulatory, regulations into effect, then it will be, then it will be legal for people to dispense it and to manufacture it, but only if the community allows it.
All right, so-
That's where we are today.
Okay, so, people with a medical marijuana card can still grow their own plants, 12 per person with a card, and then an additional 12 if someone else in the home is a caregiver and is taking care of someone else.
Right.
All right, so you can still grow in Temecula for, for medical use, and you can still use any form of marijuana, like the oils and things that they've talked about this evening in Temecula. It's just that we don't have any storefronts that are allowed to sell, and that's the way it's always been.
And, and no commercial activity to-
And no commercial activity. Okay, I, I just wanted to make that, that clear. So, you can still grow if you have a medical marijuana card and you need to use it for, for that same purpose.
They're not legal to use it.
So, so-
How do they, how do they contract that? How do you turn that into medicine?
So, all right, so we have, Matt, you have questions?
No, no, no questions. I thought we were-
Oh, yeah, we're discussing, we're in discussion.
So, you know, I, I kind of want to roll us back to February of last year for a moment because we addressed the medicinal marijuana ordinance a little over a year ago now. And, you know, the state was fairly clear on what was allowed and what the local government, the cities, were allowed to do in, in regulating this substance, regulating the sale of this substance within our city. One of the things that, that concerns me about what I'm hearing here tonight is that almost every speaker spoke out and, and said, you know, "We, we're recognizing the medicinal benefits, and we're not necessarily, you know, in favor or, or, you know, enamored with the recreational side of this." And that's exactly what we're here talking about tonight, is the recreational side. We're not here talking about the medicinal side. Prop 64 passed in California in November last year, and as a result of that, as local government, we have to preserve some rights related to recreational marijuana. What we're doing here tonight changes absolutely nothing with regard to how the city has been handling its medical marijuana issues. Absolutely nothing has changed. What we were focused on this evening, excuse me, what we're focused on this evening is the discussion of what happens when the state of California, starting next year, begins to allow and license facilities for the sale of recreational marijuana. And that's what we're here discussing this evening. That's what the ordinance is about, and we're preserving our rights and taking a procedural pause. Now, one of the things that I was deeply concerned about over a year ago when we had this conversation on the medicinal side was that we are not fully prepared to address these issues adequately. There is a lot of concern at the federal level that deals with whether or not recreational is allowed by any of the states, let alone the medical side. And you see at the federal level, quite a bit of conversation. In fact, the budget that was passed, that at least ekes us through September, addresses this issue specifically. With that much uncertainty on the federal level, let alone the uncertainty at the state level, we are still in a quandary as a local government in deciding how best to deal with the marijuana issue, both on the medicinal side and the recreational side. And so, let me be absolute in what we're actually doing here tonight and what we're talking about. We're not talking about taking away your medical rights. We're not talking about taking away your access to medical marijuana. We are absolutely not talking about that. We are not changing anything with regard to medical marijuana use in the city of Temecula. What we are specifically addressing is the recreational aspect that we will be challenged with in 2018 as the state starts providing licenses for recreational facilities. Now, I recognize that the medicinal marijuana issue is of deep concern. And anytime the word marijuana or cannabis comes up on an agenda, we're going to have considerable interest, both for and against the issue. And we realize this, right? And we get a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls and a lot of folks who speak out on either side of this issue. In fact, in our own city, Prop 64, the recreational side, passed at a very slim margin of 51 to 49. So, even with our own, within our own city, our voters, our residents are split on this issue, right? And the unfortunate thing that's happened over the last several years in this process is this all gets kicked down to local government to deal with. And unfortunately, with lack of guidance and I think appropriate controls at the federal or state level, it's left a lot of local government, cities and counties to struggle with this issue. So, going back to February of last year, I had quite a bit of concern about the issue when we were dealing with the medical conversation a year ago. And one of the things that I asked my colleagues for, and they indulged me on this, was that we would be able to have a workshop that brought in experts that we could talk to to help guide local government in this decision-making process. And I said two things. I said, "One is, I want to have access to the experts. I want to know more about the medicinal side. I want to know about the public safety issues. I want to know about all the kids that are here this evening, how that impacts them," right? "I want to be able to fully vet this issue and understand it from those folks who have gone through this in their states, along with those cities and jurisdictions that are struggling with them themselves. I want to understand what the implications of our decisions really are when we dive into this issue." So, when we use the term procedural pause, it's exactly that. It is indeed a procedural pause. We're changing, again, nothing on the medicinal side. All we're doing is saying the state is, it's looming ahead of us that there will be a recreational aspect to the state of California eventually, and as a city, we need to address that. And again, I don't feel as though we have the tools necessary to address it adequately. So, what we will be doing, and my colleagues indulged me on this a year ago, is I said, "Let's hold that workshop, and let's be able to have that conversation to help our local government and those around us prepare for this type of decision." And so, that's what we're talking about. So, I think we're targeting, you know, hopefully, later this year, we just had a meeting with our subcommittee about it, what, last week, Mike, I think? And, and we are, we're moving forward. We're finding those experts. We're preparing to have a workshop. We're targeting for a fall date, probably in October, and we will be having a much more robust and much more detailed conversation. In the interim, you know, we are taking a pause on this. But again, what we're talking about here tonight is, has, has nothing to do with the medicinal side and, and your rights here today. What we're talking about is just the recreational aspect, and it's even in the title of tonight's agenda item, implementing Proposition 67, or 64. That's exactly what we're here talking about tonight. So, I appreciate the input. I appreciate the passion. We appreciated all of the, the, you know, testimony that we, we had on this issue a year ago. But again, you know, we're not, we're not here addressing that. We're here addressing the recreational aspect of that. And so, I look forward to having that robust conversation, hopefully by October. But in the interim, we have a lot of uncertainty in the process. We don't know where the federal government's going to come out on this issue, whether they, you know, implement a blanket prohibition, or whether they, you know, divide it between a medicinal side and a recreational side. We don't have a lot of uncertainty there. And at the state level, even after Prop 64 passes, we have a number of bills that are being written as sort of cleanup language to help consolidate all of the, the legislation that's been passed on marijuana use in the state of California. And now, we have new bills that are, you know, showing up, both, you know, expanding and contracting these, the authority that we were supposedly given. And so, those bills are still making their way through the legislature, and so, there's additional uncertainty on top of that. And so, you know, at a local government level, we're doing the best we can to address what I indeed agree is a very sensitive issue. We just need the time to be able to bring the experts in the room to help provide us the guidance and get some clarification from the federal and state government on this issue. So, I appreciate you all coming out here this evening and speaking on the issue. I appreciate everybody who called and, and sent emails and, and letters to the city, and we're working on it. We're doing it diligently, and we're doing it carefully, and hopefully, by, you know, October, we'll have a lot more clarification on what we need to do as a city. So, thank you very much.
Stu?
Well, I have a problem with this particular ordinance, just because it doesn't allow for deliveries. And to me, delivery from outside the city of the medical marijuana to, especially to like a caregiver like that who doesn't have the ability to go out and get that medicine for their, their loved one, is going to be a real, a real problem. And, and I, I've heard their testimony, and I, I'm a big natural healer type of person too, so I believe in all that stuff. So, and I, just the way this is worded, it, it just makes whatever they're doing illegal. And, and I don't want them to feel like they're being illegal.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, so that, that's my only complaint, is if there was, if there was some sort of wording that said, "Medical cannabis" or, or something like that, deliveries of medical cannabis is allowed from outside the city. Because, because I agree. I mean, I don't, as a city official, I don't want to have to take on the regulatory issues with this when we don't really know the regulatory issues with this, you know? And even the processing, I have no idea what it, you know, you guys are all, you know, proficient at processing, but if it were to come from outside of the city and the city has no legal obligation, I, I don't know what the city attorney would say about that, but I don't have a problem with that. And for, and in reality, it's almost impossible to regulate. I mean, people are getting deliveries every day in Temecula, and, you know, how many people have gotten arrested for it? Probably nobody.
That's a big example.
Right, exactly. And, and that was my point, is, is I don't think it should be a criminal offense to get a, a medical delivery, something that's going to make your life better, so.
Yeah, Matt?
So, can I, can I ask a question, Peter, real quick? You know, again, what we're, what we're here talking about is the issue related to Prop 64 and the recreational side. And I think, Stu, you know, your point is exactly why we asked for, or why I asked for the, the workshop, because there's a lot of uncertainty, a lot of issues that I don't think were adequately addressed when we made our decisions last year. And part of the reason why was because, you know, the state gave us basically, you know, till March 1st of, of last year to implement something related to medical. And so, a lot of cities throughout the state of California had to sort of rush to be able to craft some type of ordinance to preserve the rights, otherwise, the threat, I think at that time, was the state would then take those rights and, and, and tell the cities how they would operate. And so, in order to just preserve our local control, we went ahead and did what we did. But, Peter, I guess the, the question I have is, we're, we can't really amend this, this evening, related to the medicinal side, because this ordinance is specifically for the, the recreational piece.
Are you speaking of the deliveries?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think it's a, it's an important conversation to have, and hopefully, we get there. But my understanding was this evening's topic was-
This ordinance provides a, a section that does prohibit deliveries to or from any location in the city of marijuana.
But that's no change than what we already have on the books.
No, I don't believe there's a prohibition on delivery. That was added by the, the planning commission.
No, that, the prohibition, I'm sorry, but I thought the last time we went through this, the prohibition on delivery was, was already in place at the end of, of our last meeting in February last year.
Of, in early 2016?
Yeah, for medicinal.
What was added at that time was the provision that allowed people with medical marijuana cards to grow it outdoors.
Right.
But that ordinance did not, did not deal with any medical deliveries.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But to grow it, like they were saying, it's the processing part of it that's the hard part. That's, that's the thing that takes a lab or something, and I think that's what they're, they're more concerned about, is being able to get a hold of the product done in a proper lab, done to the specifications necessary to make it actually usable.
Mm-hmm.
So, growing it in your house is, is kind of irrelevant, because most of them don't smoke it. Probably 90% of them don't smoke it. They eat it, consume it somehow, so.
But I guess that's, that's where I was, that's where we were at with this, with this conversation a year ago, is that, that issue that you bring up is, I think, an important one, and we discussed that. But, you know, I don't think anybody was prepared at the time to make the decisions, which is why we wanted to get through the workshop and the conversation, because, you know, one of my, my concerns alongside that, and there's nothing wrong with, I mean, you could pull up your app on a phone right now and, and request, just like Uber, medical marijuana deliveries within the city of Temecula. I mean, literally, I mean, this, it's out there. And, and you're absolutely right, there's no enforcement going on of this issue, and there's no real oversight of the issue. The, the deeper concern on that, though, is that we now have a substance that's driving through our city that we don't actively regulate. That's largely a cash-only business. That is a target for illicit activity. And how do we regulate and deal with that? And, and these are the types of questions that, you know, these aren't just simple decisions in my mind. These are the kinds of questions that I struggle with, because, you know, somebody mentioned earlier, one of the speakers, I think gentleman in the back, that, you know, this is, you know, allowing the, the legal cultivation, legal sale and so forth helps reduce the illicit activity. And in some communities, quite the opposite has happened, right? Quite the opposite has happened. You have seen a dramatic increase in not only illegal sales and distribution of marijuana, but also methamphetamine and heroin. And so, I'd like to be able to talk to those communities, excuse me, I'd like to be able to talk to those communities and find out what specifically is happening, because I'm, and I'm not saying one is related to the other. You know, there've been studies in, in Washington State and, and other areas that have related it to the uptick in the economy and, and recovery past the recession. There's been studies that talk about the reprocessing of oxycodone as, as it relates to the increase in heroin use. And, and so, there's a lot of commingling factors here. But again, the decisions that we make here, and the reason why we're asking for this procedural pause, is because there is a considerable amount of uncertainty, and a decision we make is going to have potentially significant implications on public safety. And so, until we can bring the experts here to help guide us through this process and answer a lot of the questions that I and my colleagues have, you know, I'm just, I'm a little uncomfortable shooting from the hip and modifying this, because, you know, I think at this point, we're talking about not really changing anything that we're doing, just being able to move forward with this, with the intent of critically evaluating this by October.
So, Peter, if we just simply remove the, the portion that prohibits deliveries, that takes us back exactly to where we were last year?
That's correct.
Okay. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Ron. I know that you're always, you always want to make sure that we study an issue sufficiently before we make a decision, although I have to say that sometimes I think we can over-study, and we have to be careful not to get ourselves in, in that position. I, I think what's important, even though I certainly agree that we're talking about recreational tonight, but going back to last year, when we did make the decision to allow cultivation of medical marijuana with a card, in my mind, and I'm curious to hear what my colleagues have to say, in my mind, we, we crossed a threshold at that time, and we said to ourselves and the public, I believe, that we want to allow medical marijuana in our city. We want to control it. We want to make sure that the drug does not get in the hands of those who should not be using it, but we wanted to support those who need the drug as medicine, and we came to the conclusion that it does help people. And that may sound like a very mundane decision to some of you, but that was a big decision for this very conservative city and this very conservative council. But we were convinced, very much by people like you who came before us tonight, and we agree that there are great medicinal benefits. And so, all I'm saying with that is that I want to make sure as we go forward, whatever we craft as a policy, once we know what the state is talking about, once we know what the federal government is talking about, that we preserve- once we know what the federal government is talking about, that we preserve that element of what we've already decided and not go backwards. So, we may not know today exactly how we intend to regulate it, exactly what the rules need to be. But I do think, at least for me, I'd like to put on the record that we do support medical marijuana for those who need it legitimately. And let's preserve that element of it.
Mike?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I've been enjoying listening to my colleagues' dialogue and learning a lot and getting everybody's perspective. I do have some things I want to say on this, not necessarily in, in the order which they came up. I've just been making notes. First, I see Laura Lynn out there. I appreciate you coming, Laura Lynn. You know, I know of Laura Lynn, I know of her son, and, you know, I really admired you because your son had all kinds of food allergies. And, you know, you, you, you actually dove into it, and it turned into a family business. And, you know, she was the go-to place for gluten-free and dairy-free. And, you know, on more than one occasion, she made my son a birthday cake, because he's severely allergic to gluten, severely allergic to dairy, but he'd like a birthday cake like anybody else, you know, and so... She was operating over in the shopping center where Zarca Cigar Lounge is, but then you moved it to your house, correct? You still operating? Just... Sort of. And, and I'm sorry to hear that your son is suffering these seizures, and I hope it comes out well for you. And sort of leading into that, I just appreciate anybody who came out here tonight to talk about this. I mean, you know, it's, it's going 10 minutes to nine. You've been here, obviously, since 6:30 or 7:00 to talk about something that's passionate to you. And it's certainly not lost on me, and I definitely know it's not lost on my council colleagues or, or the staff. So, so thank you. I've been up on this dais a long time over the years, and I'm rarely, I rarely vacillate, if you've, if you've, you know, if you know me. And there's probably many of you who don't know a lot about me or kind of know some of the things my family's gone through. And, but this one is really an interesting one, because on any given day, I can go this way with, with a yes, and then go this way with a no. And let me, let me kind of explain a few things. I, I brought up Laura Lynn and my son is because I'm a big believer in alternative medicine. On my son, I have an 11-year-old son who was diagnosed with autism at the age of four. And if I listen to all the experts and the teachers and all of that, he was destined and doomed to a life of 24/7 care with no hope for the future and definitely no prospects to do anything productive in his life due to alternative medicine. And his mother, he's on his way to living a very typical, a very productive, happy, happy life. And it's due to alternative medicine. No cannabis wasn't involved, but I have to tell you, a lot of other things were. So, I've, I've come to some, some areas, you know, you trust doctors in other areas. You don't, just because Big Pharma has a lot of, a lot of influence out there. I came to realize that when I wanted a very simple methylcobalamin, also known as vitamin B injection for my son, and went to his pediatrician. He said, "Ah, you know, we can't prescribe that, because it's not in the medical protocol book." And I literally went to the book, see if the AMA said it was okay. AMA said, "Oh, it's not okay." Therefore, he couldn't do it and stay within his licensing guidelines. Went to my buddy Jeff Stone, okay, who runs a compound pharmacy, had the prescription. "Sure, Mike, we'll have it ready for you this afternoon." Helped my son a great deal. So, kind of how I feel about that. Also, as my colleague here, Mr. Carmicero, indicated, you know, we, we had the discussion thoroughly on, on the medical aspects of marijuana last year, and I think we, it was a very passionate discussion. And I, I think we did come to those conclusions. At the time, I, I did share about my son, but I also shared about a, a nine-year-old family member who we just had our remembrance, that she passed away one year ago, last week, from a very rare form of childhood cancer. And, you know, she used the CBG oil, which helped her tremendously with pain. And I shared at the time that her mother had to go up to Northern California to get it, where it was being made illegally, and then sneak it back, just so she can be out of pain. And so, I understand that. On the other side, and this is where, you know, I don't want to appear wishy-washy, there is a problem with recreational marijuana. There's a problem out there. And, and I think we'd all be lying to ourselves that says that, to some degree, the medical marijuana card, to a great, to, in a great manner, is being used by some, a great deal of many, as a ruse, just to get recreational marijuana. We all know that it's extremely easy to go get the marijuana card. For $75, they'll write you a prescription, or the doctor will give you the, the card. And at that point, you can walk in any dispensary and, and shop till your heart's content. That's a problem. It's a problem that we also have to deal with the medical aspect. We cannot look at, at, at either one in a vacuum. And I don't know how to reconcile the two. It's a true problem. We, we can't, I mean, consider for a minute, because really, what we're saying here with this ordinance is no dispensaries continuing, no dispensaries, medical or otherwise, in Temecula. What we're saying is, we don't want to make it easy for, for people who shouldn't have this medicine, or this drug, or this recreation, whatever, whatever you want to call it. We don't want to make it easy to get in a, but it already is easy, in a sense. I'll tell you how easy it is. Obviously, you can go get the card, or you can have a friend go get the card, and the friend goes shopping, and the friend brings it all back. And, and the people and the kids are using it. And that's a real problem, so we can't ignore that. Yet, at the same time, again, my colleague mentioned the, the medical benefits, which I concur with. A, let's see here, let's see. Again, I vacillate. My colleague, Mr. Stewart, you know, mentioned something. While we crossed the line last year and did something extraordinary by allowing the growth, I fully acknowledge, a lot of it's not smoked. You're absolutely correct. A lot of it is, needs to be taken via edibles, or tinctures, or topicals, and things of that nature. And you know what? We just don't have the information about how does that get regulated? And, okay, can that also be used in an illicit manner, or in a recreational manner? I don't know what the control of that is. We, we need to nail that down. My colleague, Dr. Ron, brought up something that was very interesting. And I think it bears mention, we're taking an action tonight, because we have to take an action tonight, or lose our ability to take action in the future. And that's real key. So, in a sense, the law that was passed says, if you don't take charge, city of Temecula, you will then be governed under separate rules. So, we, we almost have to take this action. As I'm going on chronicling all these things, and this indecisiveness, and this lack of information, we don't want to lose our ability to take action in either direction, either with banning or allowing. We want to retain the ability to take that action, so we need to take that action tonight. But let me vacillate a little more for you. Because I, I won't, I won't kid you, I don't know that anybody here on this dais, after this ban goes into effect, is gonna come back next year and go, "You know what? I think we ought to have dispensaries." I don't, I don't know how that would fly in the, in the city of Temecula. And so, my next thought is, I do have to say, I mean, I'm extremely moved when I start hearing about all the medical conditions. I, I can't ignore it. I've experienced it in my own life with family members. I don't think anybody in this room doesn't know somebody who hasn't had an experience with cancer or, or some sort of medical malady that might be alleviated by marijuana. But we're gonna have to start hearing from the opposing side pretty soon, or, or, or there's going to be dispensaries. I, I, I'm saying, if there's a, if there's a, let me explain what I'm saying. Is there's a whole contingent out here that will go bazonkers, because they expect us to not have this. At least, I'll speak for myself, okay? But, but I think it's a general nature, the conservative nature of the city of Temecula. They trust us to vet these things. But I need to start hearing the other side, the why we shouldn't have it side. Because we're hearing a lot of, and I'm putting the word out there. If we're gonna make an educated decision, I need to hear everything. And that also speaks to a couple of things my colleague, Matt Ron, brought up, is the council, at the time we approved the, the growth for medical aspects, we also said we're going to look into, have some workshops, start gathering the data. And we're in the midst of doing all that right now. So, we need to get that data. I need to hear the, the, the good and the bad before I, I make this decision. But the key is, we got to keep it out of the hands of those that shouldn't be using it. And until we find that, until we find that, I'm really not certain what to do. I think those that would use it, and I don't know this, so don't boo and ha me, but I think that those who would use it recreationally might outnumber those that need it medically. I don't know, but I think that's the case. And I could be wrong. I'd like to know that information. As it relates to deliveries, I, I, I want to leave it in there, and I want to proceed with caution, and I'll tell you why. If you don't have it in there, and I don't know that we're gonna be able to enforce it anyway, but I'd rather have it in there and enforce it when we need to. But if, if deliveries were overtly allowed, nothing stops somebody from loading up the truck and driving around Temecula Marietta and answering his phone, and literally being a mobile dispensary. Okay? And, and I'm sure people are doing that now. Literally, load up the truck, pull into somebody's driveway, show them the card, go get what you want. But let me vacillate again. Mr. Stewart, you took some words out of my mouth. I, I don't want to see anybody have to commit a criminal act just to get what some consider medicine. It's a real conundrum. It truly is a conundrum. So, I, I want to ask the city attorney something, just real quickly, before I conclude, Madam Mayor. And I'm just curious, nobody, don't go running with this, and if the newspaper's here, don't go quoting me. It's just a question, okay? Can the city allow one dispensary permit? I, I'm just curious. I mean, in my mind, I'm thinking, can we hold a lottery? Allow one CUP for a dispensary? Condition them to have a police officer all day that they're open, okay? And then also condition the manner in which they check the cards. I'm just, I'm just sort of thinking out loud here. And, shoot, put it right outside at City Hall. I'm just curious. Nobody go running with it. I don't want to read in the paper, "Nagar wants dispensary at City Hall." That's not what I'm saying. I'm setting up a...
How much could we regulate it?
What I'm saying is, I'm setting up a question here, exactly, Madam Mayor. Is that possible? Let's say we wanted to allow one permit. Can we do that?
Other cities have had a system in which dispensaries are limited to a certain number, then they have a lottery or other system for selecting that dispensary that, that gets the permit.
So, one permit is possible, and of course, all the other regulations we'd want to attach to it.
I don't know about the regulations that you described, but cities do allow a limited number of dispensaries.
Got it. And then, one last thing I'll bring up. There are lots of burdens. I, I don't want to ever minimize somebody's burden. If you, ma'am, I was touched by your story, my gosh, your, your husband's passing away. Give him the marijuana. You know, I mean, it really is doggone simple. And frankly, shoot, if you ever need help, give me a call. I'll go get it for you, okay? That's, that's, I mean, seriously, I, I feel that way about that. But I have to ask this. Is it truly a burden? Now, for some, it would be, okay? For others, it would not, to get in the car and go to the city of Paris. Make your purchase and come back. And I'm not asking you to answer that. For some, that will be a burden. For others, it would not, because you could probably, I, I mean, I know my office is in Paris. There's probably six dispensaries within a mile of my office, and, and they do a robust business. And I'm sure a lot of people go there now, from the city of Temecula. But that's another question. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm vacillating. I'm truly just opening up my heart to you and all of these things, saying, "I don't know the answers to these things, and I want to be a good legislator and make the right decision, but I just don't have enough information." Left with that, we have to do this, at least that's my opinion. And I think I would not be out of line in making the commitment, this is my last statement, that Councilmember Ron and I, who sit on the subcommittee, are doing all of our due diligence and will come back to the council and to you with, with at least more information that, to make a decision with. But I'll tell you, it really does come down to, how do we keep the needed medical cannabis out of the hands of those that would abuse it recreationally? I'm sorry, I can't, I can't take that from the audience now, because the hearing's closed. But that's how it is for me. I need to keep it out of their hands, okay? Out of these young people's hands. Don't want to make it easy for them. They may use it anyway, okay? But we certainly, they're gonna watch our lead. They're gonna take their example from us. And if, as adults, we say, "This is okay," then that's the message that we're communicating. I'm not certain that that's what we want to do as a community. Again, I'm not certain. So, Madam Mayor, I've, I've spoken a lot, but I tried to encapsulate everything. So, I, I think we need to do this. I'm gonna support doing it. But I've also made a commitment that Councilmember, rather, Mayor Ron and I are really knee-deep in this thing, and it's very complicated.
Stu?
Okay. So, if we don't pass this, we lose control of the marijuana issue? I thought we already had put in place an ordinance.
The council put in place an ordinance prohibiting all cultivation within the city, whether it's for recreational or medical. Prop 64 passed in November, and once the regulations are in place, which are expected to be in, in January of 2018, then the state will regulate the recreational marijuana. So, under Prop 64, the city council can prohibit dispensaries and commercial marijuana activity within the city. And that's what this ordinance does. It prohibits the commercial marijuana activity in the city, so that when the state gets the regulations in place, those will not override what's going on in the city.
And do we have to do it by a particular date?
Well, the, we don't know exactly when the state's going to adopt the regulations. And so, the, the recommendation is that we do it as soon as possible, so that we don't get kind of caught up in the, when the state may or may not adopt the regulations.
Okay. So...
And the second aspect of it is, is the policy decision of the council, that you wanted to keep things as they are, keep the status quo, until you can spend all the time you need to look at all of these complicated issues.
So, that being said, as, as far as abusing, you know, marijuana, how many kids, 16-years-old, drink? You know, they hand their 20 bucks to a guy who's 21 and gets their beer, you know, or whatever they're gonna drink. So, I mean, you can't really, you can't base your whole legislative process on, on the thought that you gotta keep it out of the hands of those who, who shouldn't have it, because they're gonna get it anyways. They're gonna find a way to get it. So, to, to me, to, to make them criminals based on people who are gonna do it illegally anyways, to me, that's the wrong way to govern, in my opinion. And I'm, I'm still, I'm still concerned. I'm gonna vote no on this, just basically out of principle, because I really do think we, we need to have some sort of a language that, that takes medical marijuana or cannabis, or, or something out of that picture. And I like Mike's idea of perhaps even, you know, one city-approved dispensary. And I know Matt's got an idea about that, too. But, so, so if, if we don't know when our rights are gonna be taken away as far as this ordinance is concerned, I'm not, I'm not that in a hurry to approve this without getting the language, maybe just a little bit, just to leave the window open for the medical side of things. But Matt, I'll, I'll let you go for it.
Well, I, I guess, again, I'm still sort of confused, because this, we're, we're not specifically addressing the medical side this evening. This is just specifically for the recreational.
The wording pretty much says, "All marijuana..."
Cultivation related to, but the, the title of this, though, is, and maybe we can get some clarification from city attorney, though, but the title specifically is saying, "Marijuana cultivation implementing Proposition 64." And so, this is...
Well, the, the issue is, back in early 2016, you prohibited all marijuana cultivation within the city. In 2006, you prohibited medical marijuana dispensaries, because at that time, anything other, other than that was illegal. So, none of that is... So, none of that is changing with this ordinance. You know, maybe the confusion is, is that we put all of the prohibitions on marijuana activity in one chapter. But medical marijuana dispensaries have been prohibited since 2006 and will continue to be prohibited under the proposed ordinance. Marijuana cultivation, with the exception of medical marijuana cultivation with a card, was prohibited in, what, January, February of 2016? And that will continue and not be changed by this ordinance.
And we're also recognizing that under the new state law, an indoor cultivation of six plants is allowed.
That's correct.
For recreational use, not purely... Yeah, okay.
It's not limited to medical.
Sure.
I mean, not limited to...
Recreational.
Sure. And so I guess, going back to what Mr. Nigar was saying earlier, you know, we're doing a deep dive on this because we need to. Nobody's saying that the, and it was. I think it was a very big step that we took last year in addressing the medical side of this issue. And as we are looking at this further, and that's why I asked for this workshop, is we really do need to investigate this a little bit further. And Jeff, I know we can beat the horse till it's dead and then, you know, continue even a little bit longer. And, you know, that's maybe just the academic in me. But we haven't answered a lot of the questions that we had a year ago because we just, you know, a lot of this still is uncertain, and we've been dealing with a moving target. But as we, and, you know, Stu, you're absolutely right. As we start to address the potential for a facility in the city that allows for the distribution and sale of marijuana, maybe on a purely medicinal side, I think the reason why there's this pause in my mind is because, you know, we have a responsibility to provide the kind of clarity and control that's so poorly missing from the state and federal government, right? They're providing us literally no real tools for developing this. And if we are going to allow for a facility, and Mr. Nigar is saying, you know, hey, let's just put one in and see how it goes, okay, if that's, you know, an option, then let's make it the example. Let's make it a model for how to do this well and how to not only ensure that the quality of the product that's being provided within that facility is the highest level, but also that it ensures, you know, the rigor that Mike was talking about with regard to, you know, potentially abuses. But, you know, also just ensuring that public safety aspect of this. And I think, you know, much like how folks have, over the years, we've developed all sorts of standards for building codes and certifications on facilities. I think we have an opportunity to do something very unique here in this conversation. And that's really what I'm looking forward to later this year, is to be able to understand, if you were to create ordinances that allow different types of activities and use, what does that model ordinance look like? And let's not make those mistakes because the mistakes that have been made in other communities have been, you know, a detriment to those communities. And so we absolutely, we understand the medicinal side. We're not disagreeing with that. We're not even, you know, debating that. We just want to make sure that whatever we do moving forward here provides the highest level of safety and control and rigor for our community. And I really believe that that's, you know, sort of our solemn responsibility to our city. So, you know, just give us, give us a few months. Let us work through. We're not changing your access. We're not changing anything with regard to the medicinal side. We just need a moment to be able to address this further. It's going to be a public workshop. You know, we hope to have representatives from all the other cities down here because what we do collectively is, you know, going to impact everybody else in the region. And so it'd be great to have a very good, robust discussion. I'm looking forward to it, and I'm hoping that we're able to finally answer a lot of the questions that we've been struggling with for over a year now. So with that, I don't know. I mean, that's about all I've got to say.
So, I'm taking the mayor's prerogative to jump at any time since I can't push a button and request to speak. So, I had discussions with the city manager when we talked about this last year. And I had said, the only way I could support any kind of a dispensary is if it were the type of dispensary that functioned as a pharmacy, dealing with marijuana, the byproducts. In other words, the things that were made from marijuana, not just dealing with, you know, the things that are smoked. Because I think that is a whole different category than what we're talking about in, you know, drying the leaves or the buds and whatever, and smoking. So we're talking about the creams and the oils and things like that. And I definitely think that we've all come to the conclusion that those are beneficial from a medical standpoint. And so I've always said that if it were run like a pharmacy, the problem is, there are no state guidelines for how that is to be done. So I don't know how we would go about that. And if we could do that, Mike, I have no problem with that because it provides an avenue for the people that need it in those forms, in the form of a tablet or an injection or cream or, you know, however else they use it, a liquid. So I have no problem with that, if we could have something that operated like a pharmacy. But there are no examples. So... And there is one difference in this ordinance in the past one. We are prohibiting deliveries with this ordinance. So that's the difference.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah?
Just to point a clarification, and Peter, you can jump in, but this agenda item this evening and everything that's in front of you is essentially restating the current position of the city of Temecula. And we do not allow dispensaries today. We do not allow deliveries today. So it's actually really not a change to our current position. Now, if that's something that's going to change down the road, then we'll need to address it at that time. But as Mayor Protem Ron said, this was geared towards commercial grows and recreational marijuana because you have passed the medicinal marijuana ordinance. I just wanted to, am I correct, Peter Thorson, on the deliveries and the bans?
Deliveries are not currently prohibited. This ordinance would prohibit them.
Right.
And, but you're absolutely right that a lot of the new prohibitions in this ordinance are what will be legal under Prop 64, once the state adopts their regulations.
And that's why we're looking at this. So that we, at least until we know what's going to take place, we have control over our own local...
And as you said in the last two meetings on this issue, you want the time to look into all of those issues in significant depth.
So really, what we're looking at is the same thing we have now, only we are prohibiting deliveries. And in my mind, by prohibiting deliveries, we're preventing some of these people from getting the things that they need.
Madam Mayor, I think, forgive me for jumping in, but I have to defer to what Mayor Protem Ron said. This is addressing Prop 64, which addresses recreational marijuana use. I will, though, acquiesce that, I guess, as a residual effect, it will affect, okay? But its primary purpose is not to, you know, prohibit people from getting what they need as a medicine, but certainly, it's an ancillary effect to it. But this whole thing is being brought up because of the recreation aspect.
Sure, sure it is. That's just a, that's just a side effect. I mean, by disapproving deliveries, you're going to prevent deliveries of all kinds.
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, then, why don't we just have it read recreational delivery?
So not prohibited.
Right?
Can I address?
Yes.
Maybe I have a solution. Maybe everyone will think I'm crazy. If anybody thinks this is not a complex issue, just watch what's going on here. And I mean that seriously. This is very difficult.
Because we're trying to accommodate people who need it.
Why can't we remove the delivery provision that is included in here? Go ahead and pass the ordinance absent that provision so that we truly don't change everything that has been in the past. And just about all of the problems that we're having here with this is because we're tying the medical marijuana issue to the recreational issue, although it wasn't intended to be that here. So why don't we just bifurcate them totally? And go ahead and approve this ban tonight, absent the delivery option. Delete the delivery option as is. And agree to bring back, in some reasonable period of time, the medical issue and deal with that separately so that we don't get all jumbled up in this. And I have to say, something that's a little disturbing to me, and I don't want to place blame on anybody, certainly not our subcommittee, but if we agreed well over a year ago to hold this workshop and to resolve this issue, why haven't we done it? Why has it taken a year? Oh, well, I think we have to get on the stick here. And I know it's difficult, and I know finding the experts are difficult, but, I mean, this is a critical issue.
You know, I'll jump in.
Again, I don't mean to place blame. I know you guys are working hard on it.
We're big boys, so don't worry about it. But, and I definitely want to hear Mayor Protem's point of view, but this is evolving and changing regularly, okay? It's a moving...
Can I just, before you get too far, that was a motion that I was making.
Okay. Good, because that's what I said, what, 40 minutes ago? Let's just drop the deliveries.
And while I know that you're trying to compromise, I'm not going to support dropping the deliveries because I, and I'll tell you why, is there's a whole, God bless you, there's a whole culture out there, okay, of recreational users that are abusing the system that literally, this will go out over the wires, and you will have more marijuana being transported and delivered through Temecula than you would believe because it'll be a tacit approval. That's why, that's why that's in here, and that's the work Councilmember Ron and I have been working on. So, and that the Planning Commission also made a recommendation to do, which, by the way, we asked the planning, this council asked the Planning Commission to look at that issue specifically. So I'm not so ready to just dismiss it. We explored it and examined it for a reason. And then, with all due respect to my colleague down there, because I do respect you, you know, it is a slippery slope argument just because somebody may give 20 bucks or what have you. You know, and just because that may happen, I mean, if I followed that logic to its logical conclusion, why ban or eliminate anything? They're going to get it anyway. Let's just legalize it. And so, I mean, but see, both of those are two extreme examples. Neither one are apropos, so we find that somewhere in the middle is probably more reasonable. That is what we need to work on. We have to find that middle place. And I'm adamant. I tell you, I truly do believe on the, that there's a medical aspect to this. But make no bones about it, and Council or Mayor Protem Ron will tell you because we've been doing the due diligence, you start bringing the police officers up here, they don't want it, okay? The police officers do not want it, okay? It is a problem. It leads to other drug use. It leads to other drug dealing, okay? This group out here booed my colleague because he brought up methamphetamine. I thought that wasn't appropriate because he was absolutely on the money, okay? There are illicit drug dealers that deal in marijuana, that deal in methamphetamine and other things.
They up sell.
And we're not making it up. I mean, there's a literal heroin epidemic going on in the heartland of the United States and the East Coast right now. I mean, places you couldn't imagine. It's real. So, just not going to roll over. This thing needs to really, really be looked at and not treated, not suggesting we are in a flippant manner.
But Mike...
Mayor Protem Ron, go ahead.
I would agree with you about the deliveries because in an ideal world, you know, we don't want things being transported illegally through our city. But I don't have another alternative for these people, some of them who have no other way to get the medicine that they need. And if that were the case, if we could find another way for them to get the medicine that they need, and, you know, I understand they can go to Paris, but, you know, when you're, when you have a loved one that's in pain and you need something right now and you can't leave them alone, it's not that convenient. If that were the case, then I would say, let's leave the ban of deliveries in place. But that doesn't answer, that's not the solution for these people.
Not today.
Yes.
Okay? And so, and we're, we're not here with solutions today.
Agreed, but what does it change? And I...
It's been this way for a year.
I completely agree with you in terms of Stu's comment, but by the same token, if we remove the ban and come back with a medical marijuana policy and say 60 days, what have we changed for those people who are using it illicitly now? Nothing. What have we changed for those who really needed everything?
Right.
That's the side I got to come down.
Explain how. Explain how. How does that change?
Because we're relieving their pain. We're even possibly saving their lives, although that's getting a little bit ahead.
Well, presumably, they're getting their medicine today.
But we create a hardship for them to do it. Why?
We could only relieve the hardship today or leave it in place. We're not creating one.
Agreed.
Okay, okay.
Right.
All right, all right. And again, I gave you my disclaimer. I vacillate, okay? This is a tough one. But the idea here is we are buying time because we are exploring this issue in depth. We're working on setting up a workshop. And the workshop is actually, and I'll let Mayor Protem explain to this, it's no small thing, okay? And there's workshops being, occurring up and down the state of California by the League of California Cities. I think WR COG just finished doing one. Other cities are doing them. This is an emerging industry. Nobody has the answer. So, I'll finish my comment. I want to hear what my colleague has to say because we've been working on this. But I'll tell you, there's a whole economy out there. We make the announcement that deliveries are on in Temecula, and you just open the floodgates. And I know you don't want to hear that, but I'm very much in tune with that industry because, you know, I've shared with you in the past, I have a nephew who's an attorney. He wrote the ordinances for Paris. He's very much in tune to it. I get feedback from it all the time. And it, you'll open the floodgates. You'll actually...
But Mike, a year ago, when we didn't disallow deliveries, did we open the floodgate? What's the difference?
Well, can I make a recommendation here?
Invitation. With this dialogue that's going on right now, okay? What we're doing, even by having this dialogue right now, we're telegraphing that marijuana's on its way to being allowed in the city of Temecula. I'm not ready to do that, even by having this discussion. And I'm not ready to do that because we have not studied the broad and wide ramifications of it, okay? And I fully admit, as I told you, the medical properties. I've done it on more than one occasion, so my eyes are not closed to it. But there are broad ramifications to this, very broad, that we have not brought to this council. We have not explained. We have not heard from law enforcement. We have not heard from the medical professionals of the fire department. All of these things that we have been tasked to go out and do and bring back to this council, we have not gotten. So I'm not ready to just willy-nilly remove that. Now, you may take my word for it or you may not. By having this conversation, we're one step removed from allowing marijuana. And then at that point, why not allow recreational marijuana? What's the doggone point?
And can I chime in here real quick?
Well, we talked about time, and you said another 60 days. I'm worried that some people may not have 60 days.
Madam Mayor, I don't know how to respond to that. I mean, I do not want to respond flip, but I think that any answer I give would sound flip, okay? Certainly, I would not want somebody who is in dire need. I literally, and I meant that, you need somebody to go get it for you. I'm in Paris all the time, okay? I'll drive you. Really, I would do that for somebody. I've offered to do it for others. I have done it for others. But we're talking about something that's, we're talking about what goes on in the whole city. There's 114,000 people that live here, okay? I had, what, eight or nine people speak today? And I made the observation that if there's going to be an opposition, they need to start coming to the council meetings and telling us why, okay? They're opposed to this. They're not here tonight, okay? I don't know that they're here tonight because we haven't invited them to be here. Again, we're working on that. And now, I mean, not inviting them, inviting their opposition. We haven't finished our due diligence. At this point, if, I don't want to, I don't want to put strings on this, but if we go ahead and are allowing deliveries that we haven't sat down and talked about the ramification of having those deliveries, of the approval of those deliveries, which are occurring today illicitly, by the way. So you can understand that there's some pause when people are delivering in Temecula. There's pause because it's illegal. Do you follow? When you remove that illegality...
Mike, I follow.
You open that up, okay? So, I'm not ready to remove that illegality.
But you were a year ago not ready to impose it.
No, I don't understand what you mean.
You didn't ban the deliveries a year ago.
There was a reason why we didn't do that. We were, we weren't tasked with looking at it, okay? Now we just, then we tasked ourselves with looking at it, and we asked the Planning Commission to look at it, and they did. And they came back with a recommendation. I don't know. I don't know, I don't understand what you mean. I was ready to approve it a year ago. I don't remember I was ready to approve... I don't remember I was ready to approve the deliveries a year ago.
Well, we did, we did the whole medical marijuana, and we allowed people to grow, and we disallowed dispensaries, but we talked about the deliveries in town, yet we did nothing to dissuade them or make them illegal. So we knew they were taking place a year ago.
Madam Mayor, that doesn't mean I was ready to approve deliveries, so let's, it just means we didn't address it.
Right. We didn't make them illegal at that time.
Well, instead, what we did was we tasked the subcommittee to go out and do some work, which the subcommittee is doing, okay? And along the way, we also tasked the Planning Commission to go do some study, and we understood a lot of things. Look, I don't want to keep beating this dead horse. If the will is of the council is to allow deliveries, I will not support that. I will not support it because we're not done doing our work.
So, if the will of the council is to maintain the status quo...
Just be specific with what you're...
The status quo is that dispensaries are not allowed, and we're not addressing deliveries.
No, deliveries are not allowed in the city of Temecula today.
Peter.
There is no, no prohibition. There's no prohibition in Temecula for deliveries.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. It's been like that for a year. We didn't do anything about it last year, so now why all of a sudden is it so urgent when we have, we're leaving these people with no alternative?
Okay.
That's what concerns me.
If I could, if I could clarify...
Please.
Two points there. One, there's no direct prohibition on deliveries of medical marijuana in Temecula because it wasn't addressed in the Temecula Municipal Code.
Right.
The, there is a prohibition on delivery of recreational marijuana because the state has not licensed the people who could deliver it.
Right.
Fair enough. So, with deliveries intact, who can tell the difference between medical and recreational?
Yeah, the, the person who receives the, the marijuana would have a, a medical marijuana card. In other portions of the city, that's how that is enforced. They will ask for a delivery, and if they say, gee, I don't have my card, then the person delivering it gets a citation.
Okay, so, and thank you.
So, right now, let me clarify, we've got a motion on the floor to drop the deliveries and, and maintain the status quo, which is prohibit the dispensaries and, for recreational, because we're addressing commercial right now. Right? So that...
If you drop, there's one section, subparagraph D of, of 8.52.040 that prohibits all deliveries, okay?
Right.
So if you drop that, deliveries of marijuana for medical purposes would be allowed, deliveries of marijuana for recreational purposes would not be allowed.
Right.
And the distinction is...
And that's the motion.
The person who has a caregiver card or a marijuana, medical marijuana card would be entitled to receive the delivery.
Yes, that's the motion.
Okay.
And I need a second.
Can I ask for a point of clarification now?
Yes, you may.
Is that, as we are discussing this, the reason we are doing this is because there is considerable uncertainty about when the state of California may be pushing out some of the regulations related to Prop 64, including the delivery of recreational marijuana.
You are correct.
So part of why we tasked the Planning Commission...
Thank you.
... to address the, the delivery issue is because at some point before we are prepared to pass an ordinance that addresses this, and we refer to this as a procedural pause, the recreational delivery aspect may rear its head on us. And so if we have nothing, and so what I would like to propose here is...
Banning it with my motion.
We're only...
Banning recreational deliveries and allowing medicinal deliveries.
Are we, but you've asked to, so you're, you're saying you're banning the delivery of recreational?
Yes.
So we need to amend the language of that delivery section?
Peter just did.
Yes.
No, Peter said that, that's not what he said. He said that...
The only, the only motion I heard was to delete the ban on deliveries.
Oh, he says we're leaving it up to the state...
Right.
On the recreational.
If we do nothing, if we have nothing, nothing in the language, so all I'm asking you is, could you amend your motion to say recreational deliveries?
Yes, and that was my intent.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, point of clarification...
Because then I'll second that.
Point of clarification, can you go buy recreational marijuana today?
Not legally.
Okay, all right. How will you draw the distinction of the delivery between legal and not legal? I understand you have a card, but that problem is occurring today anyway, is my point, okay? And that is the whole effort of why we formed the subcommittee, to sort those things out.
I know.
Okay? All right. So, why, by allowing the deliveries, you are also allowing, or tacitly, or de facto, I should say, allowing delivery of marijuana. Actually, yes, you are. Actually, in a, in a quite efficient way, okay? Because those that would walk in with a bogus medical card or a card obtained under false pretenses, because you can get one extremely simply, okay? And are going into dispensary and saying, listen, my toenail hurts, I need marijuana. I mean no disrespect, people do do that, okay? I have a headache, I need marijuana. I, I have a backache, I need marijuana. It, it happens all the time, it's being abused. If, if, if they can do that now, we are actually promoting the delivery of the very same act occurring without having sorted out the issue, which is what we have been tasked to do.
Mike, if 100 people abuse it, and one person is relieved of pain, I'm voting yes.
Yeah.
Because I think that's wrong. What you're saying, what you're saying is a problem. I agree with that, and we've got to solve that problem, but not at their expense.
Now, you see, that sounds very noble, and how can I argue about that?
You don't need to argue.
No, I, I do, because, geez, what if we have 100 children who are trying marijuana for the first time recreationally, because it's becoming readily available? Then, then that scares me.
They get it from their friend.
Well, then let's just legalize it, and that's what Stu's argument was.
No, let's prohibit it.
Well...
And that's where we're going.
Well, no, it's, no, the state of California has allowed it, okay? So if it's, everybody's going to get it anyway, then let's just allow it.
Putting words in...
No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to say that, that the idea that everybody's going to get it anyway is a flawed argument, okay? That's what I'm trying to say. Yes, everybody's going to get it anyway.
Mike, we're coming up with a solution that you guys are working on, and we're all going to discuss further when we have more information. Okay, we all agree on that, right?
This is, this is at least for now.
We're talking about today, for the next, whatever it is, 30, 60, 90 days, to let the status quo be the status quo. Why put people in harm's way, or at least in a position not to relieve their pain and suffering, while we're doing this when it's been that way for so long anyway?
Because that, because that's not happening. See, no one here, by our action today, is going to be denied anything they haven't already been getting, so...
Because they're going to get it illegally?
Well, they're getting it now anyway.
But you're making them a criminal, that's, that's my point.
And I'm sympathetic to that.
Yeah.
I truly am. That's not lost on me, I said that in my comments, but, but there's a whole other part of the population that, that, that needs to be considered at the same time, so. We've beat this, I'm done, I don't have any more arguments, it's not something I will support, and, geez, I don't know if I can continue to do any more work on the committee, to be honest with you. I don't want to bring back and have to retract something that we're, that, that we might have to, that we're allowing today, because we've had another finding, so...
And I'd like to make just one quick comment, Jeff, on, on your, the timing question on, on the workshop. We're moving as quickly as possible on that. I mean, we had to wait until after the November election to see, you know, what the state's decision was. We brought the item back for discussion at the first council meeting that we could. We then kicked it back to Planning Commission, they reviewed it at the earliest meeting they could, now it's back to us. So we're moving as, as quickly as we can. I realize it's not fast. Jeff, I, I wish we could have addressed this, you know, at the beginning of the year.
I'm not...
You know, yeah, but, you know, I just want everybody to know, we're working on this as diligently as possible, and, and recognizing that there's, you know, there's, it's a moving target, and, and that makes it a challenge for us. And so we've sort of set our timeline, we know when we'll be, you know, pulling all of this together, and, and yeah, this is not going to be an easy conversation, but, you know, I really appreciate, and the Planning Commission did, I think, an outstanding job. Let's not, you know, forget that in this process, as they're tasked with as difficult a question as we have in front of us today. And so I think, you know, thank you all on the Planning Commission for, for addressing this, this issue for us.
So in summary, we're looking at disallowing any dispensaries. We are making it illegal to deliver recreational and medical, medical is still all right.
Well, we're just, we're being silent on it.
We're being silent.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a clarification. We're removing the delivery aspect out of the ordinance.
We're removing the, we're clarifying the language to say only recreational deliveries and leaving that language in.
Would you like me to read the language?
Yes, but Madam Mayor, I also want to make an inquiry of the police chief. May I ask him to come up, because I do have a question for him?
Sure.
Wow, you thought you weren't going to get drawn into this, Chief Kubal?
Chief Kubal, we always look to you for the truth. Nobody up here has so much pride that they are not worried about being wrong, I'm certainly not. We've heard the discussion, what say you?
About which thing? About the deliveries?
No, about deliveries. I mean, the whole issue's about deliveries, so...
Well, the issue about deliveries is, is difficult to enforce to begin with, so I don't think we've ever had anyone cited, I mean, it's not illegal at this time, but I don't see how we can enforce that anyway. I mean, we have to find probable cause to stop the vehicle, and probable cause to search the vehicle and find marijuana, and then inquire about if the person has a card. If the person has a card and they're within their lawful right to have medical marijuana, then our inquiry into the marijuana is over. Whether they're delivering it to a patient somewhere in the city or somewhere else, or whether it's their own, our inquiry's over if they have a card and they're allowed to legally possess it.
So...
So it's very difficult to enforce.
So, you have a dispensary making deliveries. Presumably, he's going to try to deliver, make more than one delivery in one trip, let's say he's coming out of Paris, and he's got 10 deliveries he has to make here in, in Is it possible that he would exceed the amount? I mean, what, what regulates what he's allowed to carry around and sell?
Nothing right now.
Well, the Health and Safety Code makes it clear what someone with a medical marijuana card is allowed to possess. So the first thing is, they don't have a blinking light over their car that says, I am delivering marijuana, so...
You mean like Domino's?
We would have to have a lawful reason to suspect a crime and make a vehicle stop and have that contact progress into a search of some sort or observing marijuana in the car. Each officer is going to deal with that specific situation uniquely and compare what he finds with what the law and the book says is lawful or illegal. If what he finds is illegal, meaning the person has a card, but they have too much marijuana, more than what the card allows, then the officer would take enforcement action.
Let's look at it a different way. You're, you're a dispensary, let me ask my question another way. So you load up your van with 10 different jars of, of smokable cannabis, you, you load up your van with some tinctures, some creams, some edibles, et cetera, and you roam the streets of Temecula, or Marietta, or wherever, waiting to start getting your phone calls. Is that illegal? Notwithstanding any probable cause to stop, whatever, but at that point, he's a mobile dispensary, is that illegal?
If he possesses more marijuana than what the Health and Safety Code allows with a medical marijuana card, then yes, it's illegal. Some of the things that have been talked about, you could go into organic roots and buy, CD, the oil, you can buy that over the counter. So some of the things we've talked about aren't illegal to possess to begin with.
Correct.
I, I would also add to that example, if the person loads up their car with all the different types of marijuana products, and then goes to people and says, here's what I can do for you, look at the options that you have, at that point in time, it's not a delivery, it's a mobile marijuana, medical marijuana dispensary.
And it's illegal.
And it's illegal, under the current code in, in Temecula.
What's the distinction?
It, 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 there, there is a distinction there. How often we would have evidence to prosecute that is, you know, is difficult. But if, if the facts are that they have all this product, and they're telling people what should be used and what should not be used, that on those facts is a mobile medical marijuana dispensary.
But let's say he's just like the ice cream man, okay? And, and he roams the streets waiting for the call and says, I want some sativa, can you bring me some sativa? And so he pulls up and he delivers sativa, specifically requested, just like an ice cream cone.
Right, but, but that, that's, that's covered, that's not covered under the marijuana dispensary ordinance.
Chief, how many times in the last year have you found that situation?
None that I'm aware of.
So nothing, so we're not talking about changing a thing?
Right. Well...
I haven't pulled statistics specifically looking for that in preparation for the meeting tonight, but I, I get notified when unique things happen and arrests are made of things like that, and I don't have any recollection of anything like that occurring since I've been here in four years. I mean, it hasn't occurred at all that I'm aware of.
Okay, so, so, I mean, my last statement on it, and then we can go ahead and take the vote. Without looking into this a little further, it's a mobile dispensary, is, is pretty much what you're allowing, and that's what I'm saying, is, is we're allowing, we're disallowing stationary dispensaries, but because somebody could put the product in their car and say, I'm going to six or 10 different places, it is a de facto dispensary. And, 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 and the industry is going, like water seeks its, its lowest level, it's going to find its path of least resistance, and that's what we would be allowing until we can figure out the stopgap measure to control it. That's all. So I'll call for the question.
All right, so...
Madam Mayor?
Peter.
I, I understand that you want to permit deliveries to the, for medical marijuana purposes. If I could read some suggested language...
Sure.
Which I, I hope will make that clear. And if you go to 8.52.040, which is on, which is in the, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, there's, there's not a page number on there, that's, that's the one that prohibits deliveries. And, and my recommendation is we say, except for deliveries to primary caregivers or qualified patients as defined in this chapter, all deliveries of marijuana or marijuana products to or from any location in the city are expressly prohibited. And then the second sentence would begin, again, except for deliveries to primary caregivers or qualified patients as defined in this chapter, no person shall conduct or perform any delivery of any marijuana products, and then the rest would remain the same.
All right.
I'm good with that.
I'm good.
I have a question. There is, there are no other parties, so those definitions don't apply to anybody unless you do have a card. In other words, who does it not apply to, so why doesn't it just remain silent?
Well, because the qualified patient and the primary caregiver are, are people that will have cards.
And hence, they should be allowed to get deliveries, so why would we even have to be, why would we have, why can't we just be silent on it? In other words, not prohibit deliveries and leave it at that, just take the prohibition of deliveries out?
Well, one, one reason is, we have defined commercial marijuana activity, which under state law also includes the medical marijuana activity. So if you want to have a provision that allows a delivery from a legal dispensary to a qualified patient, you would have to parse that, parse that out, so that you can make an exception for them.
Even though today there is no mechanism to buy recreational marijuana?
Yes.
There's no, there's no mechanism for it, card or no card?
True, but at some point in time, between now and the beginning of 2018, there will be.
Pardon me?
That's what the whole ordinance is for.
And that's what this whole ordinance is trying to address.
Right.
Is the balance of all of the things recreational.
I prefer, just my preference, we remain silent on it?
And that's, that's a, that's a policy decision for the council.
That way, we're not removing anything in the future if we have to?
And that's what we did last year, we remained silent.
I'm okay with being silent as long as that gets us where we want to go in terms of the protections that we need.
Me, too.
It doesn't, based on what you want, and the reason it doesn't is because the state law defines commercial marijuana activity to include deliveries and of medical marijuana.
Oh, it leaves us vulnerable on that side.
And that's the only reason I'm, if I could, if I could just delete that section and get you there, that would be the easiest. But because of the other definitions, we need to put in a specific exemption.
So we got, we separated commercial and medicinal?
Well, we separated medicinal and recreational.
Recreational, okay, so, we're good. So you're...
No, I'm good with that.
It's good how it stands. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so let's go ahead and vote. There you go. Okay, so it is for, in favor, and Mike voted no. All right, thank you, gentlemen. That was an excellent discussion.
No, we're not done yet.
Oh. Okay.
We now know where you stand on deliveries, but I need to read the title of the ordinance, and you need to adopt that with this new provision. And the title of the ordinance is, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula Amending Chapter 8.52 of Title VIII Health and Safety of the Temecula Municipal Code to Prohibit Commercial Marijuana Activity in the City and to amend regulations pertaining to marijuana cultivation, and amending Title XVII zoning to prohibit commercial marijuana activity in all zones, and to amend regulations pertaining to marijuana cultivation, and finding that this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 1506-1B3."
All right, so I need a motion for that one.
Move approval.
Yeah, that introduction will include the change to subsection D that we just discussed.
All right, so...
Madam Mayor, I'll need a voice vote on that one.
Okay, need a voice vote. So a motion and a second. All in favor?
I need a little more clarity. So, so we already voted, what's the second?
You voted to modify subsection D to allow deliveries to qualified patients and caregivers. And then the second motion is to approve the overall ordinance with that revised provision in it.
Okay.
The title of the ordinance.
Okay. Trying not to be schizophrenic here, but it looks like I have no alternative to vote no. At the same time, I agree with ninety-eight percent of it, so...
Well, again...
You're not compelled to vote no.
No, I won't. No, I'm trying to figure that out. No, 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 why?
It's okay.
No, did you have a, something of merit that you wanted to tell me?
No, I just, you know, it doesn't matter.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed?
No.
All right, so it was four one. Now, Peter?
Councilmember Nigar.
Yes.
Yes, now you're done.
Okay, good. All right, so moving on, we have a second public hearing. I'd remember fourteen, conduct public hearing number one regarding the transition from at-large to by district elections and adopt the related resolution of intent and resolution establishing criteria for single member voting districts. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Over the last several years, cities and school districts and community college districts throughout the state of California have been changing from at-large to by district elections to comply with the California Voting Rights Act and/or to avoid litigation. On April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, the city council authorized the transition of the city's election system from at-large to by district elections. The transition process itself is set forth in the elections code. District boundary maps will be drawn by a professional demographer in consultation with the city attorney and city clerk based on the criteria in law and public input. Community input is important to the districting process, and all residents are strongly encouraged to attend the hearings to provide public input. The hearings are publicly noticed, and information about the districting process is also provided on the city's website. Two public hearings are required prior to the maps being drawn, and two public hearings are required after the maps, as well as sequencing being published for the specified time period. Tonight, it is recommended that the city council conduct the first of four public hearings to receive public comments regarding the transition from at-large to district elections for members of the city council, the timeframe for this transition, the criteria and the factors that go into the drawing of the maps of single member voting districts, the composition of these districts, and other matters related to the election of the members of the city council, and also adopt the related resolutions of intent and criteria. That completes staff report. I'm happy to ask if there are any questions if you would like.
Are there any questions? No, no questions. All right, so we have to open this public hearing, and we have public comments. I see quite a few.
We do. We have five public comments. The first speaker is Patrice Lines, to be followed by Shirley Housar.
Patrice, hi.
Hi. Kevin Shankman is not only suing all over Southern California, school districts, cities, he is suing Autozone, Chipotle, Coconut Water. He is suing One World Enterprises, which was dismissed, Panda Express. Shankman's demand letter indicates no plaintiff. Shankman has no standing in Temecula, and as far as I know, in California, you cannot file a lawsuit without a plaintiff. So he is essentially threatening, "Do what I want, or I will find a plaintiff." He states proudly that he exploits cities and calls us easy targets. Do not fall for this bullying. According to California Voting Rights Act, a minority vote would have had to have been diluted in an at-large election. No minority votes were diluted in the Temecula election. No racial polarized voting, no dilution, no harm, no intent, no discrimination, and no denial to access requiring a remedy. At-large voting is representative of the people. By district voting divides the people's vote and disenfranchises us all by limiting our vote to only a district and every four years. In the city of Palmdale, none of the trial court's briefings concerning voter dilution were challenged in defendants' briefs, and basically, that was the problem. That's why Palmdale lost. Now, earlier tonight, I was here with two friends. One of them was from the Trump administration, and she had to leave to attend another meeting, but she left me with this to, to tell you, her statement that she was going to state. "You are hereby put on notice. You must comply with federal law. You need to represent the entire city of Temecula. Jeff Sessions and the federal government and the Trump administration are looking into Temecula on this and other issues. So please keep our city an at-large voting city. Thank you."
The next speaker is Shirley Housar, to be followed by Stacy Barth. Okay, Skylar, you would be after that, and then Ira.
Ira's here?
That was Skylar.
Oh, Skylar's still here.
Very brief. First off, I don't know if being threatened by a federal government is very good for our city. I mean, we are the city of Temecula, but aside from that, I have been a strong proponent of by district elections, as the council and staff may know. I do believe that going to by district elections makes sure that our council members are more representative of the communities that they live and work in. Again, I'm just oddly perplexed that apparently we are being investigated by the Justice Department and the Trump administration. If that is credible, I would hope that the city attorney would hopefully, and I understand that the California state laws, and hopefully that we'd be able to use the law in our defense because I know that we could fight a threat like that. So, thank you.
And then Ira is the last speaker.
Mr. Robinson, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I will try to be more brief, Madam Mayor, members of council, than my notes suggest I should be because of the hour. But I've got three comments I'd like to make on the materials that were published in connection with this item. One comment has to do with the composition of the group that decides what the districting will look like, and it appears that that composition is the city attorney in conjunction with the public comment and in conjunction with the, with the city clerk. I would like to suggest, as we do with the California Citizens Redistricting Commission, that there be citizen membership in the group that decides how redistricting looks. That just allows for greater input. It worked very well in the state of California. I think it'll work very well here. That's point one. Point two, in connection with proposed Resolution Number Seventeen, there is a provision that requires compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. Because it differs a little bit from the California Voting Rights Act, I think the provision should be revised to require compliance to the greatest extent possible with both the federal act and the California act. And that's included in the criteria in proposition, proposition in the Resolution Seventeen. The other provision in Seventeen that is really objectionable is a provision that says, and I need to quote that one, that says, "Council, each council district shall attempt to avoid head-to-head contest between incumbent council members insofar as this does not conflict with federal and state law." I think that avoiding contest between incumbent council members is totally beyond the purview of the law, which suggests that'd be deleted. Thank you.
Thank you. And could, could we address those issues, Peter, really quick, or Randy, one of you?
Sure.
Okay. With respect to citizen participation, absolutely, if we had the time, we would love to go ahead and have citizen participation. Given the time constraints, there, there's, we have nominal time constraints. With respect to Federal Voting Rights Act criteria and CBRA criteria, that criteria is pulled directly from the law, and the resolution is, states the criteria that's already stated in the law. With respect to incumbents' head-to-head competitions, there are, there are specific elements of the law that specifically allows for incumbents to be drawn into separate, single-member districts specifically to avoid that so as to not unseat any individual that has already been duly elected by the, by the people. Peter, I don't know if you have anything to add?
The only other thing I would add is that we are not aware of any federal investigation of the city with respect to the voting and the at-large elections. The way the federal government works is that if there were such an investigation, they would come to us and ask for documents. They would either subpoena them, or they would have a search warrant to collect them, or they would simply call up and ask for them. So if that had happened, then yes, there would be an investigation, but that has not happened, so I, I can safely say there's no, no pending investigation.
Would they be checking with the other, how many cities? Fifty, forty-four, fifty cities that have found themselves in the same situation?
That's true. There are many, many cities in California that have taken the action to go to districts under the California Voting Rights Act, so it's, it's not just Temecula.
And, and for Mr. Robinson's edification, we're using a demographer, are we not? And then there are very strict guidelines as to how the districts must be drawn as far as, you know, population and...
That's a very good point. The city clerk and I are not going to draw the districts.
No.
We may make a suggestion based on the professional advice of the professional demographer, but once that's done, then the proposed maps are, at least, there will be notice published that the maps are available. They will definitely be on the city's website, and then there will be two hearings at which members of the public can come and comment on those maps. So I agree with the city clerk that because of the time constraints, you may not be able to put together a committee, but there will definitely be a public input as to the proposed maps.
And could you just give some idea about the makeup, what are some of the guidelines that are specified in creating those districts?
They're actually spelled out in detail in, in the criteria resolution. First and foremost, each of the council districts shall be, shall contain nearly an equal population. Each of the council districts shall be drawn in a manner that complies with the Federal Voting Rights Act. And, and with respect to the California Voting Rights Act, certainly we can add that it is a bit redundant in the sense that the first resolution specifically states that this switching of the district electoral process has been doing, is being done in furtherance of the California Voting Rights Act. In addition, no council district can be drawn with race as the predominant factor, consistent with U.S. Supreme Court opinions. Each council district has to be with contiguous territory. Each council district has to respect communities of interest. Communities of interest may include specific neighborhoods and so on and so forth. Each council district border has to follow visible, natural, and man-made geographical and topographical features. Each council district shall attempt to avoid head-to-head contest between incumbent council members and council districts known to be in areas of higher-than-average-population growth, and the two-to-five-year following this boundary line adjustment may be underpopulated with the population deviation amounts. These deviation amounts directly tie to the fact that we are in between two different censuses right now, and that allows for the differential.
Okay.
So all of this is set forth in the Federal Voting Rights Act and in the California Voting Rights Act.
Okay, so it's not arbitrary, and it's not really left up to us to determine that?
No, the professional demographer will go ahead based on public input with respect to communities of interest, go ahead and populate that information as well as the data.
All right.
Mayor, point of order, move we extend to ten twenty?
Yep. Motion to move, I mean, motion to move to ten twenty. Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? No? And are there any other public comments? No, hearing none? Then we can close the public hearing. Now, we're open to comments or a motion to approve, or...
And you can adopt them both in one motion, just...
Okay.
Motion for the recommended action.
All right.
Motion for the recommended action.
Okay.
Second.
So a motion and a second.
Can I make a comment?
Stu, for, yes?
Yes, I just want to make a comment for the record, that we're not doing this because we're being sued. We're doing this because of a faulty law that the state of California has put into place. And so therefore, it puts us in a position that we have to do this. So it's, for, for anybody out there thinking that we're doing this because we're being threatened, the state of California actually did this for us. So, there you go.
Okay, so, who was my second?
I was.
Okay.
Can I just ask for a quick point of clarification to, from either Peter or Randy here, the timing on the Shankman letter is sort of independent from a process that the city was undertaking regardless?
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now push your button. There you go. All right, and that vote is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, now on to city council business. Number fifteen, approve a memorandum of understanding with Teamsters Local 911 succeeding the MOU that expired June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Approve compensation plans for the unrepresented employees. Approve the city council health and retirement benefits, and approve the Second Amendment to the city manager's employment agreement. And, who's taking this one? Mr. Butler.
I have this item this evening. Madam Mayor, good evening, council members. We have several labor-related actions included in this item this evening. I'll provide you a brief overview of the item.
We're still not working, are we?
Oh, you guys don't get to see the...
No.
I apologize, there's some technical difficulties. There's, what's on the screen is just verbiage. There's no illustrations. I'll give you an overview of what we're going to talk about this evening. It's why are we here? I'll go over the tentative agreement that we reached with the represented employees, how this impacts nonrepresented employees, and then finally, what the recommended actions are. So, why are we here? Roughly two-thirds of the city's workforce is represented by the Teamsters Union Local 911. The current MOU with them is set to expire on June thirty, two thousand seventeen. State law requires the city to meet and confer with collective bargaining units to negotiate wages and various other terms, various other terms and conditions of employment. This state law is known as the Myers-Millias-Brown Act, or MMBA. The process started late last year when the council met and closed session, were briefed on the current MOU, and provided the negotiating team direction. The city and Teamsters negotiating teams began formal negotiations in November twenty sixteen, meeting several times over several months, ultimately reaching TA or tentative agreement several weeks ago. The deal points to the tentative agreement have been written into a successor MOU that has been ratified by union membership and is being presented for the council's formal consideration this evening. The terms include implementing the balance of the two thousand fifteen reclassification study recommendations. As we've shared, we successfully implemented over fifty percent of the two thousand fifteen reclassification study recommendations through the filling of vacancies. It should be noted that this action is not a raise, rather, it is a move to place existing employees into their appropriate job classifications and appropriate pay scale for the work that they've already been doing and identified in the study. We're introducing a four hundred dollar per month Health Flex contribution. This is a use-it-or-lose-it benefit that brings us into compliance with the Affordable Care Act as we know it. There are provisions in, or these funds can only be used for medical, dental, vision insurance premiums, or a healthcare flexible spending account. Provisions in the MOU allow us to renegotiate this if there is... Provisions in the MOU allow us to renegotiate this if there is significant change in healthcare requirements per any new federal healthcare plan. We've added an additional day off per year. It includes a potential wage increase, or COLA, in July, two thousand nineteen, which is year three of this four-year MOU, and it's linked to an annual CPI for urban and clerical wage earners for Los Angeles, Riverside, and Orange Counties. This index currently has a three-year average of about one point one percent. In the event the CPI dramatically increases over the next few years, we've capped that at three percent potential. We've added forty hours of administrative leave for exempt employees. These are employees that regularly work extended hours but are not eligible for overtime. And we've added a clause for temporary out-of-class pay up to five percent. This is an opportunity to compensate staff for temporary high-level assignments. Additionally, we've introduced flexible scheduling options. This allows us to incorporate alternate work schedules, such as a four-ten work week, that may be implemented if service delivery is not hindered. We've expanded the clothing allowance to community development and fire staff. This brings in field staff in those departments. We've expanded safety equipment eligibility. This is a provision that clarifies our current practice of providing necessary safety equipment to any employee needing it. We've added grandchild to the list of relatives one is eligible to take bereavement leave for. We've added adoptive parental leave provisions, which allows for an equivalent of pregnancy disability for mothers who adopt. And finally, the city current pension cost sharing provisions will continue for PERS Classic employees over the full term of this MOU, three percent being paid by the member or employee, the balance being paid by the city. Now on to nonrepresented employees. The managers and confidential staff are not covered by the MOU. Their wages and benefits are spelled out in the management compensation plan. The city's practice, the city's current practice is to incorporate similar terms as those included in the MOU. As I mentioned, we introduced forty hours of administrative leave for exempt employees, represented exempt employees. To maintain a slight differential between managers and represented staff members, additional annual leave, as shown here, is included in the MCP. Sixty hours would be presented for managers and eighty hours for the executive team. Similar to represented employees, PERS Classic members covered by the MCP will continue to pay three percent of their pension costs, with the city paying the balance. Because these employees are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, a PERS contract amendment is necessary. Additionally, this process allows for a benefit enhancement at no cost to the city, which includes allowing employees to pay their portion of pension costs pre-tax. Council members are also considered employees. As you know, your wages are governed by state law and based upon population. In years past, the council's healthcare and retirement benefits were spelled out in a subsection of the management compensation plan. However, because retirement benefit level is impacted by the date of hire, or in your case, first year elected, not all of you receive the same retirement benefit. Therefore, it was necessary to remove the council from the MCP so that we could include all of you in closed-session briefings on our MCP negotiations, which could have a different impact on, could have had a different impact on some of the council. The benefits included in the council compensation plan mimic those included in the old MCP without any changes other than the introduction of the health flex contribution, similar to all other employees to be compliant with the ACA. The city attorney will now provide details on the amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, we're making two changes are proposed for the City Manager's Agreement. The first is that City Manager would contribute three percent of his salary to the PERS contribution with a corresponding three percent increase in salary. This is the same as the benefit and the extra PERS contribution made by the management compensation group, and because of that, this change is required by law. Under state law, the city cannot provide a more generous retirement benefit to the City Manager than to the management group. And additionally, the second change is to add the flex benefit contribution. This is required by the Affordable Care Act, and again, it is a change that is required by state law. With respect to the items on the agenda, if you concur on them, you can adopt them all in one motion. And then Greg and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. So, any questions? None? Jeff?
Just, I'd like a clarification, Mr. Butler. We saw an article in the paper today or yesterday that didn't directly state, but seemed to imply that we're giving our employees raises because we passed Measure S. Would you clarify that and tell the truth about that issue?
Absolutely, sure. The provisions of Measure S did not include any wage enhancement or any pension enhancement for the city employees. The reason we're here today is because we have an MOU with represented collective bargaining group that's set to expire come June, two thousand seventeen. We'd have been here, maybe not with its exact package, but we'd been here regardless of whether Measure S passed or not. The terms that are included in the proposed MOU and reflected in the MCP are, in my opinion, fiscally responsible. There are no wage rate increases in years one or two. It's not until year three that we proposed a wage rate increase, and we tied it to a CPI factor that is driven by the economy. So if the economy increases, that number could fluctuate up slightly. On average, it's been between one to one point six percent, though, over the past three to ten years, depending on what average you look at.
Thank you. Matt?
But to hit the nail on the head here, specifically, Measure S funds are being, are not being used in funding this package?
That's correct. The general fund is used to compensate for the city staff.
Right.
Any other questions or clarifications? If none?
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, so we are nearing the end now. Anything else? We're going to go to our commissioners. Yes? So, Mr. Hagel, we'll start on the outside.
Okay, good. I'll be real quick here. You will have before you in the near future a resolution to adopt two multi-way stop signs, both of them in Paloma del Sol, one of them at Amarita and Pio Pico, and the other at Montalegro and McCabe Drive. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. And, Mr. Telesio?
I have several pages of notes here, but I won't...
Read very quickly. Thank you. Zach?
Have I ever told you how much I enjoy being on the Community Service Commission? Our meetings are nothing like this.
Yeah, you should. You got two bicycles today.
Right, this is great. Now, our commission wanted to thank council for moving forward on Trail's BikeWayMaster Plan. I was speaking with a couple of our commissioners, and not only thank council, but really thank staff for all the hard work that they've done over the last little bit to make this a reality, all the way from the City Manager's office to every department, to Matt and Lynn, and it just has been, it's been a long time coming, and a lot of people are excited about this, and we just really wanted to thank everyone for it.
Oh, that's very nice. Thank you. All right, anything else? City Manager?
Madam Mayor?
I know you have something.
Real quick, I want to remind the public that the Temecula Parkway Freeway Interchange construction is scheduled for June, two thousand seventeen, through December of two thousand eighteen, and to minimize traffic and construction will be, the construction will be phased, but when it is completed, this fifty million dollar project will provide much-needed traffic relief for Temecula Parkway on and off ramps. We have begun our outreach campaign. Construction progress updates can be found online, as noted on the screen. And that's temeculaca.gov backslash fifteen seventy-nine south. So check back often for updates as it relates to this capital project. We'd also like to remind the community that the de facto park-and-ride lot will need to be vacated by June thirtieth. Signage is out on the site, and we are promoting via social media, media advisories, and the community, through the community. Also, rehabilitation of Margarita Road from Ranch California Road to Temecula Parkway will begin in June in order to avoid the school traffic that's there at TV. And also, I'd like to, it's my privilege to introduce one of our newer employees who has bared with us for nearly three and a half hours, and if you'd please stand, Damian. This is, Damian is our newest Assistant Director of IT and Support Services, and Damian has a bachelor's degree from Cal State University Monterey Bay with a double major in Applied Computing and Earth System Science and a master's in Business Administration from Azusa Pacific University. I know you're living in commuting in from Covina, hopes to be a Temecula resident in the very near future, so we're happy to have him on the team and appreciate you sticking around tonight.
Oh, welcome.
Let me do this introduction. And lastly, Madam Mayor, you have a small presentation scheduled this Thursday morning at Pechanga, and I'd like to invite everybody out for the State of the City address, seven thirty AM on Thursday, May eleventh. Hope everybody can come out and learn a little bit more about what's going on, what we've accomplished, and where we're going as a city, and that concludes my report.
Well, thank you very much. And Peter, anything?
Nothing tonight.
All right, so, gentlemen, if you'll indulge me, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Kent Hintergard.
So moved.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. And we stand adjourned.